Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, recordings. They can all be found at Broomfield's website at broomfield.org/councilmeetings. Public comment is welcome in person and through our new call-in service. Instructions for calling in are available on the council meeting's webpage. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have three minutes to speak. The next 16 through 25 have two minutes. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants have one minute to speak. For our hard-of-hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available in the back of the council chambers through our AV team. The City Council regular meeting is called to order. Councilmember Leslie is absent, and Councilmember Ward is joining us remotely. There are nine council members in attendance, so a quorum of the council is present. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to all.
Thank you. In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask council members to limit their comments to five minutes. If council members are given an opportunity to speak for a second time, they should limit their comments to two minutes. And we'll plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 p.m. We'll begin on councils with councils' review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from the consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to remove item 6C from the consent agenda, please.
Thank you. Item 6C will be reviewed as the first item under Action Items. Are there any objections to this agenda being approved as modified? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. First tonight, we have a very special proclamation declaring July 22, 2025, as Chief David Ramos Day in Broomfield. Well, Chief Ramos, please come and meet Mayor Protem Schaaf at the podium. I want to thank you all so much for joining us this evening. I will summarize the proclamation, and then I'll turn it over to the chief for comments. North Metro Fire Rescue District Chief David A. Ramos will retire in July 2025 after 41 years of distinguished service, having begun his career with the district in 1984. Over the course of four decades, Chief Ramos has played a transformative role in developing North Metro Fire into a modern All-Hazards Emergency Response Agency that serves more than 125,000 residents in Broomfield and our surrounding communities. His leadership has been defined by visionary planning, operational excellence, and a deep commitment to firefighter health and safety, professional development, and community collaboration. Under his guidance, the district expanded and modernized its services, achieved international accreditation, and remained fiscally responsible while planning for long-term sustainability. Chief Ramos led regional efforts to improve emergency response time through the creation of a multi-agency 911 integration hub, and he has served in numerous leadership roles across local and state fire and emergency response organizations. He's also championed mental health and wellness initiatives, increased staffing and safety, strengthened community risk reduction, customer service, and inter-agency relationships. And I can go on. In recognition of Chief Ramos's extraordinary contributions to public safety and the well-being of the Broomfield community, the city and county of Broomfield will formally proclaim July 22, 2025, as Chief David Ramos Day. This proclamation serves as a heartfelt tribute to your enduring legacy of leadership, innovation, and service to the community for more than four decades. Therefore, as mayor, I hereby proudly declare and proclaim July 22, 2025, as Chief David Ramos Day in Broomfield. You have the floor, Chief.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. It's an honor to be here tonight. I really appreciate the lavish proclamation. And to be honest, I'm a little bit embarrassed, but thank you very much. I really appreciate it. You know, it's been an honor to serve in this community, no doubt. It's a place I call home, the place I raised my family. And I've loved serving in this area, North Glen, surrounding areas. And I'm so lucky to have an incredible organization with incredible people. And, you know, part of this tonight is a big thanks to the city and county of Broomfield for me. I've really enjoyed, and our departments enjoyed, just incredible relationships. We built great partnerships, and we've done a lot of things to improve safety in the community. And I think together, we've bettered that community. And so I really appreciate everything this community's done for me. Staff has always been incredible, both present and past staff. The city manager's office has been great to us and all the departments in the city. And, you know, I want to give one more thanks and share some good news with you tonight. This day for us is a big day. And so we opened a station, a temporary station site, for Station 68. And so we've been waiting for that for a long time so we could give better emergency response down in that area just south of the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. So we are staffing a station, and the city really helped us out with this property. So we're on city property at the reused water facility just south of the FedEx building. And so we'll be staffing that station 24/7 with an engine company that is staffed with three people all the time, one paramedic all the time. So we've got advanced life support in that area with a really good response time throughout that kind of hard-to-reach area that's been difficult for us. So that's great news. Additionally to that, we closed on the land for the new Station 68 so we can eventually get off the temporary site and into a new station. So we're a new piece of property that we'll be building on is just south of the Rocky Mountain Airport, right where Sims takes the new realignment on the north side of that new realignment. That will be our property. Excellent location for response, both into the interlock and area, and then that coverage into that southwest area that's both Broomfield and Jefferson County. So we're really kind of looking forward to extending some really good response times into that community. And we really couldn't have done it without the city and county of Broomfield. So excellent help from the city manager's staff. And boy, this is a long list. It's the engineering department, the building department, Public Works. And we just had so many people helping us get this done and get through permitting to have our temporary homes, both a double white trailer and a tent structure that used to be right down the street from us here, you know, by our headquarters, while rebuilding Station 61. So we're happy to share that news with you tonight.
That's fantastic. But I know the residents down there will be so excited. So that's a great update. Did you want to share more of your update now or wait till?
No, that's all I had tonight, so.
Okay, cool, because we have you slated to give the update, and you just put it in.
That was it.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Chief. We wanted to take a group pic, but we also allow public comment. So I want to give the public an opportunity to speak on this item if you would like to. All right, then I'll go to my council colleagues. Council, Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for all of your service. You're working up till this last day, giving us updates. That says a lot about you, too. So I appreciate you all being here as well with your staff. And I read about you in the newspaper, and I just have been really appreciating all of your work. And, you know, we would be nothing without our North Metro Fire. And you have done just an amazing leadership job. I did read that you got into firefighting because your brother did. So it sounds like it's in the family. So my only question for you, now that you want to start, you said you want to start golfing and, you know, spending time with the grandkids. Can your grandkids still have access to the fire trucks? That's the most important question of the evening.
I think I can still take them there to visit. They enjoy that, so yes, we'll still go there all the time.
Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Would you like to join me in front of the dais? Can we take a group picture with you? Because you already are embarrassed. So we got the update. Thank you, Chief. Moving on. So next is council member reports. Does any member of council have any reports or updates this evening? That's Mayor Protem Schaaf.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, after vacationing with my family in England for almost the entire month of June, it's good to be back. Being overseas and in a very different time zone, without reliable internet, no phone service, I was forced to take time off, which was good for me. I appreciate everyone's patience as I've returned to respond to emails and phone calls. And I appreciate support from staff, the mayor, and my council colleagues during my time away. So thank you. I also want to give a big shout out to the various staff efforts to create a fun and safe Fourth of July celebration with the Great American Picnic this year. A lot of changes were implemented this year while keeping the core elements of the picnic intact. Thank you for the cookies, especially to distribute to the public because it was great, it was great fun to greet the attendees across all of the field. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council member reports? Councilmember Henkel.
I also want to dill that. The July 4th this year has just been amazing. Our kids had a lot of fun. We had an expansive area into that eastern side, and that really made a difference. You know, sometimes we have to compromise certain feels, right? The welcoming feel of being everything open with the safety feel of having a fence there. But once you're inside the fence, it felt like home. You know, we were back at home again. And so if you guys see a first responder, really thank them for serving on that night, and staff and any volunteers. So we received a lot of good feedback. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report that I attended the Metro Area County Commissioners meeting a few weeks ago alongside with attending the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce, and of course, joining with several members of my colleagues at the Colorado Municipal League a couple of weeks ago. So it was a great time, and I heard wonderful things with our city manager, Hoffman, attending there and speaking on behalf of many numerous city attorneys. So, or city managers, not attorneys. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I also attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference with my colleagues and was asked to join a panel of metro mayors on the impacts of the housing mandates on local communities. And basically, what the message was is that we really want to protect local decision-making. The one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work for everyone. And in the case of some cities like Lafayette, would triple their population, which is just impossible to do. So I believe that we do better as partners and work together and collaborate than with mandates and threats, as most of us are doing the housing work already. And we don't need the hammer, was my message. And speaking of doing the housing work, today, we broke ground on the Grove at Cottonwood. It is more than a construction project. It's an expression of the values of our community. It's a declaration that everyone deserves a place to call home, and that inclusion, dignity, and compassion can be built into the very foundation. The Grove at Cottonwood is our first multi-home development introduced by the Broomfield Housing Authority, and they really hit it out of the park. So thank you, Broomfield Housing Authority, for watering the seed and bringing the seeds of hope and forging the path to bring other partners along. I also want to take a moment to recognize the people in our community who have been brave enough to tell their stories and provide insights into the needs of adult children with intellectual and developmental disabilities, as well as the brave individuals with ADD who continue to speak up and out about equitable access to quality homes. Their courage and conviction are inspirational, and it's why the Grove has come to be. I'd also like to thank Blue Line Development, Catus. They designed a fully affordable project for families earning between 30% and 60% area median income. It's a very intentional community that's designed with neurodiversity at its core and will offer housing and support specifically for residents with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It is a one-of-a-kind achievement. In addition to filling a critical housing gap, this development proudly screams inclusion, independence, and opportunity, and creates a place where all people are welcome, supported, and given the space to thrive. So I just wanted to share that with you. We believe what the Grove at Cottonwood stands for, and we're committed to continuing to build a future where everyone belongs. Thank you. Now, back to the meeting. Next is the report section, if I'm not mistaken. And general public comment first. That's right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. See, I missed you. Well, now, continue with public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on matters other than the items already listed elsewhere on this evening's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city managers and staff. My name is Sarah Del Rosario. My husband Lesnar and I have been residents of Broomfield for 10 years, specifically in the Westlake Village neighborhood. We love it here and knew this was where we wanted to start our family. Three kids later, we've completed our family unit living in our forever home. However, our dream of home and family has become a nightmare every spring and summer. We need your help. May 28, 2019, I sent my first email to the city requesting help to address standing water attracting an overwhelming amount of mosquitoes and sewage smell behind our home, Westlake Drive to North Princess Drive. We have a walking path ditch that connects behind my home and many others. I did not get a response. June 8, 2019, I reached out again to follow up on my previous email. My email is forwarded, and I received word the next day. June 9, 2019, the MOC foreman told me that fall, when time permits, they will schedule the flow line to be cleared as needed. I sent another email in July asking, when will this be done? Because the mosquitoes were out of control. I understand mosquitoes will be present during this time of year. However, it would help decrease the amount we are facing due to the standing water behind our home. What good is the backyard if you can't enjoy it with your family? Finally, on August 17, or excuse me, on August 7, 2019, the flow line was excavated for a larger ditch path. It did help with water flow, but it did not solve this long-term problem. Fast forward to 2023. June 6, I send an email again. We are back to where we started. A little bit from this email I sent, please, I'm begging whomever has the authority to please have this fixed permanently. I have sprayed my lawn, lathered up my kids with repellent, and planted every known plant to help ward off mosquitoes. I'm not expecting complete eradication of the mosquitoes in my yard, but I know this would be incredibly helpful to decrease the amount we're dealing with. June 7, I got a response that the area has been sprayed and given the mosquito control plan, the three-tier approach. The problem that I and seven other homes are dealing with cannot be fixed long-term with spray. The Broomfield City Council and website provides the four Ds to help prevent mosquito bites. One, use DEET. Two, drain all the standing water around your home where mosquitoes breed. Three, dawn and dusk. Four, dress. If anyone has been impacted by this problem in this room, please stand up. This is my family, neighbors, and friends that are being affected by this. I sent an email in 2024 that I am opening my licensed home childcare. I worked very hard, and we made it. But now, I, excuse me, I'm standing in front of you asking for help, not just for myself or my family. It goes beyond that. My neighbors and their family, my childcare families have entrusted me to give the absolute best care for their children. This is part of that promise, being here today. I have spoken with over 13 Broomfield staff since 2019 to solve this problem, but no success. Please help us. I also have a folder that I can give you this evening, as well as email all of the documents of my emails from 2019 up until 2025, also photographs from 2019 leading up to 2025. I encourage you all to please go to 3390 Westlake Drive. Go there and see what we're dealing with. A picture can give you an idea, but if you're standing there, you'll experience it. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Who you were emailing? Who were you emailing?
Um, I have the list of everyone that I've spoken to from the beginning.
On council, or you just emailed staff?
I was emailing staff to begin with, and then I was shot to another person, and then shot to another person. And then someone said, oh, that's not my area. Someone told me that it's considered open space, and so it's no one's problem. And ironically, today, the north side of Northwest Lake Drive was mowed. Our side, the south side, was not mowed again. And between the overgrown grass and the, I mean, with all the rain that we've been having, it just sits there. There's no flow. I'm Princess, sorry. I'm Princess Circle.
I'm going to give you my contact info.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you for all for coming tonight to let us know. Next. Your turn.
I have a handout that I'm hoping would be distributed.
Oh, hi.
Yes, perfect. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Segaloff, a retired PhD biomedical research scientist. As a board member of PSR Colorado, the Colorado Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility, I'm speaking this evening regarding signage going to the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge on behalf of the organization and myself. Chris Alred from Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice, John Lipsky, the FBI agent now retired who led the raid on Rocky Flats, Shari Griffin of Westy Dog Park Guardians, Randy Stafford, and I have been engaged with Westminster City Council regarding the graphics and wording on signs to be posted educating and warning people about to enter the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge via the Indiana Street overpass of the health risks associated with recreation on the refuge. Westminster City Council members agree that such signage is necessary due to the contamination of the refuge with plutonium and other hazardous materials. Signage language that we proposed and was recently approved by Westminster City Council is included in the handout distributed. Notably, the signage graphics include the International Symbol for Radioactivity, accompanied by the words danger and radioactive. We ask that any signs posted by Broomfield, please use the same language and graphics adopted by Westminster. Also included in the handout is what we will be proposing to Westminster for the placement of signs and swinging gates. An important area that should have signage is the border between Broomfield and Westminster properties. We are therefore further asking that Broomfield please collaborate with Westminster to implement our proposed placement of signs. Broomfield has been a strong advocate for standing on the side of protecting public health on issues related to the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge. Therefore, we hope that you will favorably consider a request this evening. We would also welcome the opportunity to meet with you to discuss the signage issue in more detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Segaloff.
Good evening, Broomfield City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Giselle Hurstfeld, and I'm here today on behalf of the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center and also on behalf of the young people who grew up along the Colorado Front Range in the shadows of a nuclear weapons plant we were never informed existed. I'm now a Longmont resident, but I grew up 15 minutes away from the Rocky Flats Plant, a nuclear bomb factory I never heard of and was never taught about in school. I'm here first and foremost to thank you for having the courage and the strength to stand up against a paradigm of injustice by opposing the development of a mountain biking trail on plutonium-contaminated Rocky Flats land. Your groundbreaking vote in 2020 to withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project has had a resounding impact and paved the way for other local governments like Westminster City Council to more recently take a stand against this toxic and dangerous development project. I hope you know how much your leadership is seen and appreciated. While refusing to develop the Rocky Mountain Greenway on Broomfield land has been a huge act in itself, Broomfield City Council has the opportunity and the power to go even further by informing the community of the risks of recreating on the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail through informative signage at key visibility points bordering the Rocky Flats Refuge. Informative signage should include the internationally-recognized radioactive symbol, which is a proposal also being discussed in Westminster and Boulder County. The symbol should be accompanied by the words danger and radioactive in order to clearly and quickly convey the danger of recreating on a former plutonium pit factory. I encourage the Broomfield City Council to refer to the packet that was just submitted by my colleague, Dr. Deborah Segaloff, for additional guidance on how to proceed with signage. Furthermore, we ask that Broomfield please collaborate with Westminster to implement this informative signage proposal. However you decide to proceed, I want you to know that the people have your back. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you.
Lois Vanderkoi, Broomfield Heights. Good evening. A sermon for all of us. What does it mean to wake up? How about viewing and understanding the causes and conditions of suffering with clarity and compassion? We live in a hierarchical system based on individualism and individual differences rather than our common humanity. We are caught in beliefs and ideologies based on insecurity, greed, and abuse of others and our natural resources rather than love and gratitude. We send thoughts and prayers to the flood victims in Texas while finding plenty to blame rather than admitting that how we live contributes to a warming climate and more extreme weather. It's time to open our hearts to appreciate our lives here and each other. A poem by Native American US poet laureate, Joy Harho. I love poems. Honoring. Who sings to the plants that are grown for our plates? Are they gathered lovingly in aprons or arms? Or do they suffer the fate of the motor-driven whip of the monster reaper? No song at all, only the sound of money being stacked in a bank. Who stitched the seams in my clothes, one line after another? Was the room sweaty and dark with no hour to spare? Did she have enough to eat? Did she have a home anywhere? Or did she live on the floor? And where were the children? Or was the seamstress the child with no home of his or her own? Who sacrifices to make clothes for strangers of another country, and why? Let's remember to thank the grower of food, the picker, the driver, the sun, and the rain. Let's remember to thank each maker of stitch and layer of pattern, the dyer of color in the immense house of beauty and pain. Let's honor the maker. Let's honor what's made. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Castriata, Mayor Protem Schaaf, honorable council members. Hi, my name is Chris Allred, commenting for Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. It's good to see everyone again. Last time I was here was February of two thousand twenty and I'm here tonight to speak about Rocky Flats once again. February two thousand twenty was an extraordinary moment for the community. That's the night that Broomfield withdrew unanimously from the Jefferson Parkway and brought the conversation about Rocky Flats to a new degree in the community, a new degree of awareness that people know that that area is still contaminated. We shouldn't be building there. And that was soon followed later that year in October of two thousand twenty, Broomfield withdrew from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And thank you to my colleagues, Dr. Segaloff and Giselle Hertzfeld, who relayed our thanks for your courage in establishing this precedent for government transparency and public health. So that, like was mentioned, that has continued to inspire other local governments to stand up for their rights to public health and government transparency. Recently, in September of two thousand twenty four, Westminster withdrew from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And they've since protested any action, any development of that area of the Indiana Street Overpass. And so now the community solidarity is strong right now. And we're looking to establish warning signage that will continue to bring a strong precedent to this area to help people know and provide public education of what has happened to that land from nuclear bomb production and why we should stop developing that area. So thank you to Sherry Griffin, who's a Westminster, or I mean, a Broomfield resident. And she provided this map that I passed around. This, with just with the time I have here today, we'd be glad to stay in touch and communicate further about this. But essentially, this map shows the yellow line is where Westminster decided to stop development altogether. And we are hoping to establish a couple of gates near, right on the Broomfield border and using the signage language that Dr. Segaloff also passed around for your reference. So this is what the plan we have drafted now. We believe this is the strongest option we have available in order to set a new precedent. And this recommendation is consistent with the decisions of the elected officials in Broomfield and the community to provide public education and a warning about Rocky Flats. So we thank you again for your courage and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Allred. Anyone else like to be heard? Do we have anyone online? All right. Well, thank you all so much and we'll be talking about this more later. The only item under reports this evening is an update on the two thousand twenty four audit and review of the two thousand twenty four annual comprehensive financial report. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. And for those residents that are walking out, Public Works Director Ken Rutt and his team are meeting with them, Mayor. So we can track down what is, what's happening with the, with the. We'll update council on the outcome.
Okay.
Mr. Graham Clark, Director of Finance, is going to introduce this item. And I noticed that Bernie Block is also in the audience for any additional questions after the two thousand twenty four audit report. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, City Manager Hoffman. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council Graham Clark, Finance Director, here to talk about the two thousand twenty four annual financial audit. Next slide. We are very happy to announce that we have new auditors this year. Generally, it's a good rule of thumb to change auditors every five years. We previously had the previous auditors, Ruben Brown, for ten years. We're excited to have Ida Bailey do our upcoming audits with fresh eyes on our financial reports. You will note that there are some older items that the auditors have recommended that we clean up. And this is an optimal time as we make adjustments prior to the implementation of the ERP. As you can imagine, the first year with new auditors is a heavy lift as they become more familiar with our processes and procedures that are unique to Broomfield. Our accounting staff found this first year with the auditors very helpful and they were very delightful to work with. I will now turn it over to Janine from Ida Bailey to summarize the work the auditors have done in accordance with our GASB. Janine has a presentation and then we will take questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Great. I'm shorter. Right. Well, thank you and good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Janine Halfcock. I am the audit partner on this engagement. With me tonight is Brittany Burns and she is the audit manager on the engagement. Next slide. As Graham mentioned, this is our first year in our relationship, audit relationship with the city and county of Broomfield. And a lot of you were not part of the selection committee. So I just put in this slide for everyone just to kind of get to know us a little bit. We are a top twenty five firm. We have various offices across fifteen states. We do serve primarily government clients over the last seventy years. The governmental industry is one of our most proud industries in our firm where we serve over thirteen hundred government clients and we have over two hundred and seventy five staff that are dedicated to the governmental industry. So we take pride in our government audit. So just a little bit about us. Next slide. As Graham mentioned, the first year audit is not easy at all. An audit in general isn't easy. So to have us come in and upend their lives for weeks on end, we do want to give our appreciation to Graham, Roxy and the finance team. It was a pleasure. Like I mentioned, the first year audit isn't always easy and they made it a very successful one. But just for examples on here, this is what you can expect in a first year audit. We spend a lot of time during planning, getting to know you and you getting to know us so that we can provide you the best level of service. Next slide. All right. So our agenda today is fairly short. We're going to go through the financial statement audit. We're going to go through the single audit reporting package and then we're going to conclude with our final required communications by our professional standards. Next slide. So I'm going to take you to the financial statements. That is where our opinion can be found. For those of you following along, it is on page twenty six of the PDF copy. Now, out of this over two hundred and forty five page document, we actually only contribute four pages. The rest of it is prepared by management and it is not an easy task to prepare a government financial statement. So I do want to commend the finance department for putting together such a great document for you all. So to the opinion. The first paragraph of our opinion discusses what was audited. So we have audited your governmental activities, your business type activities. Each major fund in the city and county of Broomfield has seven and the aggregate remaining information. So in totally, this document covers ten opinion units. So the second paragraph does discuss what the opinion is. It is unmodified. It is the best you can get and that is for all ten of those opinion units. We state in this paragraph that your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And any other CPA firm, given the same set of records that your finance department gave to us, would come to the same conclusion as we did. And the reason for that is in paragraph three, that is our basis for our opinion. And basically, we say that we followed all of our applicable required auditing standards. We were independent of the city and we met all of our ethical responsibilities. Now, page two begins with what we call an emphasis of a matter paragraph. And what this is, we just bring to the attention to the reader of information we want them to know. And you actually have two of them, so I'll start with the first one. This is the correction of an error that Grant had alluded to correcting some prior misstatements in your financial statements. And this is detailed in more detail, my notes aren't here, on what happened in your single audit report. But I'd like to just kind of give you an idea of what happened. So there were, there was a restatement in a capital asset that should have been disposed of back in two thousand twenty. So that got cleaned up and that was in the water reclamation fund. There was also a restatement related to pension entries just to match the actuaries' report. Can't give you a year on those because of the way the actuary does their reporting. But I can tell you there are several years in your amortization schedule. So it encompassed several years. There was also a restatement due to land that was capitalized back when the event center was capitalized. So that was quite a long time ago. So and then the city and county finance department wanted to clean up some accounts receivable and accounts payable items, just to kind of get everything cleaned up and we'll be going clean from here on out. The next emphasis of a matter paragraph calls out the adoption of a new GASB governmental accounting standards board standard. The city and county had to implement a new standard regarding compensated absences. It is important to note that both of these emphasis of a matter paragraphs don't have any impact on our opinion. The, and the reason for that is the county, the city and county finance department recorded all of the correct entries to make sure that these happened. All right. So next it breaks down both management responsibilities and auditor responsibilities. Management is responsible for the fair presentation of your financial statements. Our responsibilities of your auditor, as your auditors, are that we plan and perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And then we bullet out what that means on page three for you. Uh, next slide. All right. So the middle of page three talks about other matters. So the city and county of Broomfield include other information in your financial statements than just the basic financial statements, which we provide the opinion on. So the first paragraph discusses required supplementary information. These are things like your management's discussion and analysis, your pension and OPEP schedules. But we apply such limited procedures over these schedules. We don't provide an opinion over those schedules. You also include supplementary information in your financial statements. And these are going to be things like your combining statements and your other budgetary schedules, your schedule of expenditures of federal awards or your CIFA. We do certain procedures over that information to where we can provide to you what we call an in relation to opinion. So we can say that information is reasonably correct in all material respects in relation to those basic financial statements. And then finally, you have other information. This is your introductory section, your statistical information. That is not audited either, so there is no opinion over that information. The last paragraph of our opinion document discusses other reporting. This paragraph just states that we issue a separate report over the internal controls over your financial reporting and on our testing of compliance as required by our government auditing standards. And we'll cover that here in a little more detail once Brittany gets to the single audit reporting package. Next slide. Right. This schedule of your net position is presented in your MDNA. And I like to use MDNA tables because it's the only place in your financial statements that you're going to see that comparative information. This is in a summarized format, but you can see that your total net position for the city for fiscal year twenty four was one point three eight one billion. This was an increase of seventy million from the prior year and primarily caused by an increase in cash and capital assets. You'll notice a, the significant portion of that net position or equity in layman's terms and not government terms, that seventy six point six percent or one point zero five nine billion is invested in the capital assets. So it just shows the city's commitment to its capital assets. Next slide. All right. This is also in your MDNA. The city was able to grow the net position by seventy million in two thousand twenty four, essentially as the net income of the city. The change in net position is six point seven million dollars lower than the prior year's net income, but it's made up of several items. You'll notice in the first two columns here are your governmental activities. You'll, you'll notice for your governmental activities, an increase of approximately three million dollars in total revenues. And that's primarily driven by two major things. You had an increase in your property tax mill levies and the mill values and that combined for an increase of thirty two point nine million. But you also had a decrease in that other revenue line item. This is primarily the loss of the capital asset related to the event center. Further, you're going to notice in your, an increase in your governmental activities in your expenditure line, expense line from two hundred and twenty million in the prior year to two hundred and fifty two million in the current year. And this is primarily related to the spending of your ARBA money for your specific projects. Overall, though, you can see your governmental activity revenues were in excess of its expenses on contributing forty one million to the city's total net position. And then for your business type activities, you have an increase in charges for services of almost nine million. This is primarily due to an increase in rates and usage. And capital grants and contributions, you also experienced about a thirteen million dollar increase. This is primarily related to the dedication of assets from developers. And then you'll notice your total expenses here are relatively consistent with the prior year. So no significant changes there in the business type activities. But again, strong net position here. Your revenues outpaced your expenses, contributing twenty eight point nine million to the total city's net position. Uh, next slide, please. It's stuck. It's tired of listening to numbers. I mean, to put everyone to sleep, even the computer. All right. So I'm not going to ask you to turn to the back of your, bless you, back of your report, but this is from your statistical section. And I always like to throw this in our slides just to kind of show the steady growth of the city and county of Broomfield over the last five years. You can see the continual improvements even through the pandemic. So it went from one point three million or one point two billion to one point, almost four billion in the five year period. Next slide, please. All right. So on this slide, I'd just like to list the significant disclosures for you all. I'm sure you all have read the act for from front to back. But if you haven't and you get to the note section and you get a little tired, these are the ones we recommend reading. Just, we believe of their importance to the users of your financial statements. So if you're going to read any of them, we would recommend reading those. And we also have that detailed in your letter to governments for you. Next slide, please. These are just the upcoming GASB implementations. And the two biggest ones that I believe will impact the city will be GASB one oh three on the financial reporting model improvements and GASB one oh four on disclosure of certain capital assets. We do have about a year to implement those, so we will be working closely with the finance department to make sure that that's a seamless implementation. And next slide, please. And now I'm going to pass it to Brittany to talk about the single audit. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. As Janine said, I'm going to close out our audit presentation with a discussion on the single audit results and then also our final communication to governance. So next slide. So our single audit reporting package starts out with two different auditors' reports, as Janine previously alluded to. So the first report in this section is the financial statement report on internal controls. And I believe this can be found on page 190 of the PDF. The important thing to note here is this is a report, not an opinion. And the main takeaway here is that we are required to consider the city and county's internal controls for planning and performing our audit. However, we do not test any controls here. And because we do no testing, we cannot express an opinion over the city and county's controls. We are, however, required to communicate any deficiencies that we find during our audit that are identified as either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And we did have one material weakness to report during our audit of the financial statements, as Janine discussed earlier, and this was related to that correction of the error that she mentioned that caused material audit adjustments to be made. Next slide, please. The second report that we have here that we're going to discuss is the uniform guidance report can be found on page 192, and it is our opinion over compliance related to the city and county's major federal programs. So the first paragraph states that we audited the city's compliance in compliance with the OMB compliance supplement. Next is our opinion. So once again, you have an unmodified or clean opinion over the three major programs that we tested within the single audit, the best opinion you can get. And the second, the second page of this report also describes both management and auditors' responsibilities, which are similar to those responsibilities that Janine previously discussed for the financial statement audit. The final page of this report says that we considered controls over compliance to determine our testing procedures. And we did identify one significant deficiency in internal control related to the Medicaid program, and I'll discuss that in more detail in a couple of slides. So the next slide. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the schedule of expenditures of federal awards or the CIFA for short. So the main thing I wanted to convey here is that the city had a clean and well-prepared CIFA. So what this means is that there were no findings that we reported over the preparation of the CIFA itself. So this means when we do our audit procedures, what we do is we look at the expenditures of federal awards on the CIFA, and we compare those to the revenues recorded within the city's financial statements. And we concluded that, you know, everything reconciled out. So then the CIFA was concluded to be, you know, well-prepared and clean, no findings over the preparation there. So the purpose of the CIFA is to summarize all of the city and county's federal awards that were spent during the fiscal year. This could be found on page 196 of the PDF. And we've also added just a comparison here over the last three years of total CIFA dollars spent. As you can see, it's increased year over year for the last three years, mainly due to that ARPA money that the city and county received and has been spending down. Next page. This is our summary of auditor's results. And I like to think of this as, you know, if you're looking for a good overview of the audit in general, want a quick summary, this is the page I would recommend going to because you can see how it breaks down. The top section are the financial statement results, and then in the middle are your federal award results. So as you can see on the screen here, unmodified opinion for both of those sections. We did have the material weakness on the financial statement section that Janine talked about. And then we did have a significant deficiency within the federal awards program, and this was related to the Medicaid program that we tested. And what happened here is several of the individuals that we selected for testing, the required 45-day notices were not sent timely within that timeframe. And we've since talked to management and program personnel, and they've already started implementing corrective procedures to make sure that, you know, this issue is taken care of and going forward will not continue to happen in the future. And then this bottom section here shows the three different programs we tested as major programs. And those are the programs which our opinions cover. So the COVID-19, also known as ARPA, the childcare cluster we tested, and then also Medicaid. Next slide. And then finally, we have our communication with governments. Now, this is a separate communication within your packet. It's not part of the act for itself, but is included in the packet. And this is what we like to call or think of, you know, as our final piece of the audit is delivering this report to you, the governance of the city and county. Report is required by professional standards to be communicated to governance. It says that we complied with all of our professional standards and ethical requirements. It summarizes significant risks identified that we addressed during our audit. And these would be things that we just spend a little more time looking at, you know, such as revenues, management override that are significant risks within all of our audits. As Janine mentioned previously, it talks about significant disclosures. We again call those out here in the communication to governance. The second bullet point from the bottom states that we have identified certain misstatements that were corrected by management during the audit. Thus, they did not affect our opinion over the financial statements. And lastly, we are happy to report that we did not have any disagreements or difficulties in dealing with management during the audit process to report. Thank you.
Does that conclude the update? All right, wonderful. We allow public comments on every item, so if anyone would like to speak on this topic, now's the time. All right, okay. I'll go to my council colleagues next. Does any member of council have any questions? Mayor Pro Tim Schaaf.
Thank you, mayor. So, you know, in my eight years on council, this was probably the most comprehensive, most robust audit that I've seen. This was a very good, very good first audit by your firm. Thank you to staff for your hard work alongside them to complete this, this audit report. There were three findings there at the end of the reports on page, I think it was 248. And, you know, it appears that all three of those are in process of being improved at this point. Could staff provide either now or in the future a status update of those three findings? And just to, just to point those out. So one of them was the subscription-based information technology arrangements and the, the finance recording of those. There was the inaccurate schedule expenditures for federal awards. And then I think the last one was the temporary assistance for needy families, TANF and the Medicaid.
Mr. Clark, as, as soon as the auditors fill in those blanks, if you could provide some context and summary to staff's actions then now and what's been put in place in order for that not to happen again. And happy to come back to council, but I think a little more context would be, would be important.
So forgive me, I don't have your full packet, but I think that those are last year's findings, and that might be the summary status of the prior year findings. And so at the bottom there, there should be a status update.
Okay.
Does it say completed?
Yeah, for, so, okay, so thank you for that. So the first one was, that was the the internal controls regarding the subscription-based information technology. It says it's in progress. The second one was the expenditures, and that was implemented. So that one's taken care of. And then the third one was the TANF and Medicaid, and that one says in progress.
Okay, so for the subscription-based information technology arrangements, I know that finance had a subscription that they didn't capitalize or something in the, you had to make the correction, but it wasn't material enough to bring to our attention this year, which is probably why it still says ongoing. But as far as I'm, I mean, there's nothing material or anything. And then with the TANF Medicaid, it's the Medicaid that's ongoing with, which is why we still have a finding this year.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Mr. Graham, do you have anything to add?
No, not particularly. The TANF, the Medicaid is still on there. But as Janine mentioned, the staff over at the HHS is working on that correction. And then the other ones have all been corrected in that they're not showing up this year.
Okay.
Last year's CIFA was not shown this year, so those have been all corrected at this point.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, mayor. I'll be the first to admit numbers are not my friend. And I went to the colored graphs first in the report, but and there were 254 pages, so I may have missed it. So let me ask, and my question may not be appropriate for you, but there was a lot of numbers given. I wanted to correct one thing I thought I heard you say that we had increased our mill levies. We haven't increased our levy, we've increased our revenue, but the levies haven't changed for the city and county of Brumfield, just to clarify. And secondly, I wanted to put, ask you to put in context as you can, or maybe Graham may have to do that. Excuse me. You know, there's a lot of numbers and a lot of really good numbers, so an increased revenue, good return. But one thing I think may people may miss in seeing these large numbers is that we've had large population growth at the same time and an increase of expenses and households to cover. Since 2020, I think our increase is over 5% in population, going back 2010, 35%. So a lot of growth that increases our responsibilities and costs. So I wonder if you could put that in context? Yes, revenues have gone up, but in what degree in terms of the increased growth?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good point. We've had increased revenues over the last five years, but we've also had increased expenses to about the same same ratio. And so, you know, these are big numbers and they're covering the entire government. But you're right, there are plenty, plenty of expenses that have increased as well. So they're, they're about the same. So we definitely try and keep the revenues and expenditures roughly the same.
I just think it'd be useful when, when this is all finalized to show that, that some people look and say, oh, my God, your, your budget has gone way up. But we leave out the fact population has grown. And also inflation during that same period was significant and what that has increased to whether costs, compare costs for the same things five years ago to today. I think would be helpful to give people a really good, accurate view of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council questions, comments? Well, I don't have any. That was very informative. Thank you all very much for your work on this and for keeping us updated and, and for joining us this evening. So council's consideration of the consent items is next. Earlier this eve-
Mayor.
Did I forget something?
Well, you, I mean, we usually don't have any, but I do have a little report tonight.
Oh. I'm so sorry.
Ms. Rogers.
Well, now continue with the report section of the agenda. City Manager Hoffman, do you have a report?
I do not. I wouldn't even, I was ready for the next item.
Now it's all built up, right?
I just want to recognize Kendall Hand. Kendall is a rising senior at Jefferson Academy who is doing a job shadow. She's interested in the law. And thank you to Courtney Hartman, who's sitting next to her, is one of our senior attorneys who's been helping shepherd Kendall to different meetings and different fun stuff. Don't judge us, we all like this stuff. So thank you, Kendall, for being a part of this, and we hope you found it interesting. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Roger. Was it fun? Was it really fun? Wow, good, okay. I don't think, I mean, I, I mean, I guess some people think it's fun. I'm glad you had fun. All right, moving on. Council's consideration of the consent items is next. Earlier this evening, Councilmember Cohen requested that item 6C be moved to action items. Therefore, it will, it will be reviewed at this time. The clerk will read all of the consent items. No, it won't be reviewed at this time. The clerk will read all of the consent items by title, and there'll be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read agenda items 6A, 6B, and 6D through 6G by title?
6A, approval of minutes for the regular council meetings of June 3rd and June 10th, 2025. 6B, proposed resolution number 2025-68, authorizing and approving the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, SCFD, funding allocations for the 2025-2026 funding cycle. 6D, Rocky Mountain Partnership 2025 Event Sponsorship. 6E, proposed resolution number 2025-107, approving the Third Amendment to the consulting agreement between the city and county of Brumfield and Felsberg, Holt, and Yulovig for construction management services related to the US 287 120th Avenue Side Path Infill and Transit Access Improvements Project. 6F, request for executive session regarding open space real estate transaction. And 6G, request for executive session regarding extraction oil and gas.
Thank you. We'll now proceed with public comments. If any residents are using the new call-in service, they should indicate their desire to speak by pressing star nine to raise their hand. And we'll start with in-person comments. So if you'd like to be heard on any of the consent agenda items, please make your way to the podium. Being none, anyone online? All right, thanks. We'll go to council questions and comments next. Does any member of council have any comments? Councilmember, when, or questions?
Just a comment real quick. Thank you, mayor. I just want to emphasize and, you know, give a shout to the Brumfield Cultural Arts and History Council's funding plan. I know some of them in the audience, thank you so much for the work you do. I was part of this organization for many years and appreciate your continuing efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Schaaf.
Thank you, mayor. So ditto the shout out to the members of the Arts, History, and Cultural Council for your dedication to Brumfield and the nonprofits that serve the residents of this community. Looking at the tier-three funding plan, it appears there were some tough decisions that you all made to not fund some organizations and some certain projects that were there. I trust the process that you all considered. Each application ensured the best use of the limited funds that we had available and to provide the best possible experiences and services that occur in the 2025-2026 funding cycle years. I, I did have a question about this next piece, which is the the total amount of funding that Brumfield received. So it looks like that for the 2025-2026 funding cycle, Brumfield received 308,000 and change, which is a 14% decrease from the 2024-2025 allocation. In 2025, Brumfield received 2.39% of the total FCFD proceeds distributed to the seven counties, plus county-specific adjustments. This was a 0.11% decrease, so not a lot from the previous year. But because of that other decrease, I was curious, you know, was this because were allocations down across all seven counties? Or was this just specific to Brumfield? And was there a decrease in Brumfield's sales tax compared to the other jurisdictions? Is that why Brumfield received fewer funds than we did in the previous funding cycle?
Thank you for allowing me to make that walk. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Schaaf, for the question. I'm Dana Magna20, SCFD Program Officer, working with Brumfield County. And we did see some ebb and flow with some of the counties in terms of the amount. Denver went down by quite a bit. And it really just depends on what people are spending. And we've seen some, some kind of shifting where it's kind of stagnant in terms of what we've been collecting over the years. And I think it's, we're kind of on that track again. So it's kind of difficult to really know what we're collecting. We're just at that, not even a percentage point this year going into, I think we're going into July, or not July, sorry. March, April, April.
All right, so, so it sounds like that maybe all seven counties were down in terms of, of revenue collected and being able to allocate for this next funding cycle as opposed to the previous year?
Correct.
Okay.
And what's, what we've noticed also is that because of the eligibility process, we're seeing a lot more organizations come into SCFD. And so we're actually splitting unlimited amount even more across all counties. Brumfield's been fairly stable. We've gone up a few organizations that have applied, Douglas County- Douglas County, Arapahoe County, those tend to be less, they have less of a gap between what is, what is requested and what they have to actually allocate. So, um, Broomfield's kind of about average. But the biggest drop that we saw was in Denver.
Thank you. Uh, and, and since you're up there and you brought up the, uh, the, the funding for those tier threes, I, I know that that was a big conversation, uh, with the last reauthorization of the FCFD. Uh, that, that process is just beginning, uh, for that reauthorization. Will that be a conversation? Do you, do you anticipate that being a conversation as well? The level of tier three funding versus that level of tier two, tier one funding?
Very briefly, one hundred percent.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I also had another question for the, uh, the IGA with Jefferson County for the, uh, Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport taxiway. Um, so Attorney Rogers, maybe you might be the best person to ask this, uh, but what is the difference between? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'll, I'll ask those later. Thank you.
Can't believe I caught you on a roll.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Wow. Gotta, gotta get up early to stay on top of Mayor Protem Schaaf. Um, okay. Any other questions from council? All right. Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that Item Six F and Six G are requests for executive sessions, which require two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion by council that consent item Six A, Six B, and Six D through Six G be approved? Councilmember Win.
Thank you, Mayor. I make this motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Delgado.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Being none, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. Almost all the, okay, all councilmembers have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Earlier this evening, it was requested that Item Six C be moved to action items. As mentioned, we'll review this item now before continuing with the agenda. Item Six C is council's consideration of a resolution approving an IGA with Jefferson County for the construction of a new taxiway at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And joining us tonight is Matthew Dever. He is the Deputy Director of Development and City and County, um, Engineering. We also have, uh, representatives from RMMA here, uh, to field, uh, additional questions regarding this IGA. Mr. Dever, please introduce us to this item.
Thanks. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm here to present, uh, Item Six C, the resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County. Next slide, please. Uh, Rocky Mountain Metro Airport is constructing a new taxiway K, shown in red on the image. Um, this requires lowering, uh, existing Broomfield utilities, water and sanitary line. Um, the approximate limits of the lowering is shown in blue on the image. Uh, both of those are along calendar drive. Um, per Broomfield standards and specifications, a performance guarantee is required, uh, in the form of a letter of credit or cash escrow and the amount equal to the cost of the public improvements. Jefferson County is another government agency and, and IGA has been accepted, um, in lieu of a letter of credit or cash, uh, deposit in the past. Next slide, please. This resolution twenty twenty-five dash one oh five approves the use of an IGA with Jefferson County, um, as a performance guarantee for the taxiway K project. And as, uh, Manager Hoffman mentioned, we also have Ben Miller here with, uh, the airport, representing the airport. Um, if you have any questions, we can help answer those. Thanks.
Wonderful. Short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Dever. We'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please, uh, come down to the podium. Anyone online? All right, but we have it. Um, I'll move to questions from council next. Any councilmember questions? Mayor Protem Schaaf.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Now that I'm on the right, uh, agenda item at the right time. Uh, so I have a question. Uh, so for Attorney Rogers, I think you'd be probably the best person to ask this, but, uh, let me know. Um, so could you explain the difference between the performance guarantee and the letter of credit? It talks about that in the council memo that those are kind of our options and that, uh, we chose the, uh, performance guarantee versus that, uh, letter of credit. Can you talk about those differences, please?
Sure. Um, performance guarantees are contracts. So this IGA is a form of performance guarantee. It's a promise by the other entity that they have the money and that they're going to put it toward the project and that they'll finish the project. When you're dealing with an entity that you have faith in, that you believe that they have that funding, that you've done business before, if we're talking about a private entity, a lot of times a performance guarantee, that contractual obligation will be enough. Um, when it's maybe a new contractor or company or vendor, or you're not sure if the money's going to be there, or if you're concerned that they're actually going to finish the project, you get a letter of credit, which then gets the bank's backing to say, we can certify. They have a letter of credit with us for X dollar amount that's dedicated to this project that will, um, be available to you should they fail to complete the project on the milestones that are set by the, um, project schedule.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, explanation. So, uh, working with Jefferson County and Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, we have a history of working with them and, and I think that things have, uh, have gone well. I don't think that we have any, uh, concerns about that. So probably a performance guarantee does make sense. Are we giving up any protections or extending any liability with that performance guarantee? Um, yeah, that, that is uncomfortable or, uh, or are we, it sounds like that we're okay moving forward with a performance guarantee, though.
Yeah, my office has opined that these, this, uh, this IGA, this type of way to get a performance guarantee from another governmental entity is totally acceptable, especially when you can easily see the financials that are behind a project, which we have in this case.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Um, so since we have a representative from the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport here, I was, uh, curious. So I have a question. Uh, there's a lot of concern about the increasing aviation traffic, uh, at the airports. And by increasing airport infrastructure, uh, this could signal that there's going to be even more aviation traffic and the potential for additional noise disturbances. Uh, the airport talks a lot about safety and there's also been some acknowledgement of the business impacts of the airport. Uh, how does this taxiway increase safety, uh, for the airport?
Hello. Thank you for the question, Devin, Councilmember Schaaf. So I wanted to say by saying, thank you all for your partnership and, and, uh, in the involvement in the Community Noise Roundtable and ongoing with your staff. It's been a great relationship working with them on all aspects of planning and development at the airport. Uh, specific to this project, it is not a project, actually taxiway kilo. The construction that is going across what's called calendar drive, used to be Sim Street, is not a, not a taxiway improvement for safety per se. The, the, the other part of this project, which is taxiway delta, is actually a reconstruction project to improve asphalt conditions on an existing taxiway. So that section is actually a taxiway safety improvement, uh, and just general repair and maintenance. And then the taxiway kilo is actually dedicated to improving access to the Southwest development area. To your question of concerns over increased operations, I like to start off by saying an acre of ground on the airport can generate all sorts of different types of uses. So one example is you could give it to, uh, tea hanger tenant who might fly once or twice a week. You could give it to, uh, a company like Pilatus Business Aircraft, who flies an aircraft in from Switzerland once a month. They complete the interiors and that aircraft flies out again. So it's hard to predict at present what kind of operations will be generated by a new taxiway. I know it's Jefferson County's intent to openly solicit for development proposals and evaluate those in terms of the highest and best use scenario. Uh, and one of those factors will be in terms of how complimentary it is to the surrounding land uses. Uh, our intent is to seek good business development, such as Pilatus and others like that. Hope that answered your questions. Happy to clarify if I didn't cover anything.
That does answer my question. So, uh, so with regard to the potential for increase in aviation traffic or potential noise impacts, um, it's to be seen at this point whether this taxiway does that. Uh, but what this taxi, it sounds like that what this taxi, taxiway does is open up the possibilities for that development, uh, for aviation, uh, traffic, um, whether it's Pilatus moving a plane in and out on a infrequent basis or, you know, potentially some, some, some other use where it's increasing air traffic in, in much higher scale. So I, I, I think that, you know, the, the Southwest development area, based upon the business plan, that that is, that is an area where there's, uh, significant growth for, uh, businesses like Pilatus. Uh, you know, adding on to that facility, encouraging, uh, that type of, of planes, uh, you know, infrastructure. However, it, it sounds like that it's to be seen what exactly uses will be, uh, located in that Southwest, uh, development area.
That's, that's absolutely correct. We had to do an environmental study as part of the taxiway because this is a federally funded grant project. Uh, and it took that concept plan you referenced in that strategic business plan. And it modeled potentially an increase in thirty-three thousand new aircraft operations. I would say that's potentially kind of a worst-case scenario based on just a random scattering of hangars we showed on a concept plan. Uh, but ultimately, yeah, it could be a tiny fraction of that or up to probably that number. Uh, we won't know until we see what private interest is out there for development.
Okay. Well, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here tonight. Mayor, that's all the questions I have at this time.
All right. Thank you. Next, uh, Councilmember Lim.
Uh, yes, thank you. I think you answered some of my questions that I sent an email earlier, um, ahead of time. So is, I did have a question in my previous packet where I asked about the airport influence areas. And that answer surprised me that you won't know if the airport influence areas would be expanded until the master plan of twenty twenty-seven. Is that, that seems a long way away to me as far as, um, I mean, if, well, maybe I don't, maybe this is my deficiency here. Does the airport influence area depend on the usage of that Southwest area? Or is it just anything that flies into the Southwest then is going to fly from different area, from different routes going in?
Sure. So that airport influence area was defined in the Environs Land Use Plan. That was part of our twenty-eleven master plan. I don't have the exact citation in front of me, but I think it's defined as like an area that's potentially impacted by aircraft operations. I don't particularly love the, the shape of that boundary now. I think, um, you know, a, a new master plan will probably revisit what that really should look like. And it might be less, or it might, might look different than it, than it does today. But, um, it really deserves a whole, full master planning process with, with, you know, good thought put into what that should look like in the future. Typical to what we would do in a master plan, which is scheduled in our capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-seven currently. However, I would say that we are currently undertaking, uh, Part One Fifty Airport Noise Compatibility Study. Uh, and that is also looking at the impacts of noise adjacent to the airport. Uh, we actually have our first public open house on that this Thursday at the Interlaken Hotel. So I encourage anyone who's interested in the impacts of the airport to attend that. And that will also look at, uh, it'll identify a boundary that the FAA determines is impacted by noise from a federal level. Um, so later on in that study, not, not Thursday night, but the, probably the next large public open house, we should have maps that show from a federal perspective, from a federal definition, what is impacted noise and impacted areas around the airport.
Okay. And I guess this is for our staff. So how does the, um, future designation of the airport influence area impact our development in that area? Obviously, we get, we get, we, I've, we have seen developments that say, you know, we can't put residential here because it's in the air, airport influence area. So if this airport influence area is in question of its, you know, with its boundaries, then how does this influence us in the future and what we can develop there?
Not unlike some of the, the discussions that we've had when they're outside of the, the absolute no-fly zone. When we have had residential developments come in, being transparent about what it looks like, we'll increase the scope of what those conversations are with the potential of having residential there. Um, council's also taken the additional steps to have different insulation, different windows. And some of those, uh, building cushions, if you will, that are noise, I don't want to say resistance, but, but, but certainly accommodating, um, some of those various noise a, as well as impacts being under that fly zone. So, um, it would just be increasing that scope so that people are well aware, uh, developers are, um, with what those restrictions look like and, and what those additional accommodations would be from this council, if in fact they approve any residential development.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could follow up on the previous questions a little bit. If I understand correctly, you're adding this runway to add access, but you must assume there'd be additional flights. So if you're getting, I don't know, four to six hundred flights a day now, what do you project will happen once this runway is completed?
Good question. Uh, first, I want to clarify, it's not a runway we're adding. If anything, we're going to remove a runway within the next couple of years. That's actually degrading in condition. It's called runway three two one. Uh, but back to that environmental study we completed, it's called a categorical exclusion. Uh, our consultant projected up to thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five new aircraft operations based on a kind of a totally conceptual development over there. That was a mix of tea hangers for small airplanes, large hangers for larger aircraft, uh, corporate jets of that type, and some manufacturing and repair operations. I, I would suggest that's probably kind of a worst-case scenario because we just kind of said, show us what could fit over there. And that was, and that was what they drew up. Uh, I would say that represents an eleven percent increase in traffic from the operations we had last year. Uh, what we do know in terms of traffic, and I would like to note here that we do not directly control traffic. We don't, you know, tell aircraft when to fly, when pilots when to fly. But that can vary significantly on an annual basis. We are trending approximately thirty percent down this year as compared to last year in terms of aircraft operations from January through May. So just in a simple annual cycle, we're actually having, um, less operations that are projected to occur from opening up one hundred and thirty acres of development.
So you're saying traffic is declining thirty percent this year. You're anticipating this project will increase traffic eleven percent in the other direction. The one question I've also been asked, and if you could just clarify, will the flight schools have any use of this? Will this impact them in any way?
It's difficult to foresee at, at present. I think it would depend on kind of the, what submissions we get from that, uh, solicitation we do for our development proposals. Um, I would say that we probably have interest in development, uh, twice a month from various developers. And we are completely built out on the north side of the field. And so naturally the discussion goes to what can they build over on that side? Again, we will carefully rank and evaluate proposals and seek the highest and best use over there. And from what, from the, the type of developers and aeronautical uses that have approached us, I would say flight schools are, are not, uh, in any way the majority of the interested parties in development over there.
Okay. And I wanted to ask a related question because I was, excuse me, looking, and I don't know if you can answer, but maybe point us in the right direction. Looking at FlightAware statistics, I think from twenty-three, the last couple of years, your, your traffic has been increasing. So this last dip is unusual for you. But in a related thing, Erie Airport, which is near, closer to our ward, um, traffic has gone up fifty percent in the last two years. And just looking at their day-to-day traffic counts, taking two at random, May fifteenth in twenty twenty-three had thirty-three flights out of Erie. This year, May fifteenth had a hundred and eighteen. June fourteenth, two years ago, had seventy-seven flights a day. This year had a hundred and thirty-nine. And it looks at the traffic pattern that it looks like a lot of touch and goes. So flight school operations at Erie. So the concern we have, I think, to say is, are there flight, this flight, uh, school traffic that's been causing so much impact out of your airport, is it being shifted to the Erie Airport? Um, which would be impacting more Broomfield residents with that traffic. Also, there's a concern because there's been several fatal accidents, uh, flights coming out of Erie into Anthem. So could you address what's happening at Erie? Are, is traffic being shifted? Is this you? Is this FAA? What's, what's going on?
Well, as you, as you kind of guessed at, at the start of your question, that is, it would be completely kind of, uh, I guess on my part in terms of why a particular pilot decides to fly and go do touch and goes at Erie versus Rocky Mountain Metro Airport. On a macro scale, there's a couple of things that could be happening. Either, you know, the pattern is full at- On a macro scale, there's a couple of things that could be happening. Either, you know, the pattern is full at Rocky Mountain Metro, or one thing we've heard suggested is like tower staffing prevents additional touch and go traffic at some of the busier airports. And so pilots naturally seek out other places to go. I would say that's akin to like if you're in driver's ed and you're looking for a quiet, you know, you don't necessarily want to go practice on on a busy road right away. You might search out a quieter airport. Or particularly, you don't want to sit in traffic. You want to be doing your procedure. So again, those are just guesses as to why naturally someone might choose to fly and do pattern work at Erie versus our airport. But again, it's a it's a it's a individual pilot's decision on where they fly, how they fly. It's not something that Jefferson County, as a sponsor of Rocky Mountain Metro Airport, has any control over.
So are the flight schools at capacity at your airport?
How would you define capacity? I'd have to ask.
Well, you only a certain number of flights can happen, touch and go each day. You have a certain capacity.
Yeah. So I mean, just just from casual conversations with pilots, they would suggest that there are certain times of day where it might take a long time to take off, or there might not be available pattern work at our airport. Their traffic control might say, you know, that pattern work's not available right now. And so that might cause someone to choose to fly somewhere else. But again, it's individual pilots making individual decisions.
Okay. So maybe a question for staff. Have you had any reports from FAA or where what these traffic patterns are occurring? And and what can we do to figure out or address this issue before we have what's happening at RMMAs, surrounding neighborhoods, happened to Anthem and that surrounding area in wards four and five?
We are we are not in communication with the FAA regarding flight patterns, whether it be from RMMA or the Erie Airport. Doing additional investigation about kind of hypothesizing of of why they're switching to Erie Airport. I think the FAA would can they would only be able to hypothesize as well, particularly from the the flight schools perspective. We'll certainly keep our ears and eyes open about why they are transitioning and what this additional modification would mean, not only for the Erie Airport, but for other surrounding airports, particularly with regards to the to the the student pilots and those smaller businesses that are just trying to find some space in order to learn to pilot. So it's that it's counterintuitive. There's there's not enough pilots yet. You the noisiest are when you're learning to fly with not only the touch and goes, but I think we've all been. I was at the PD and Fire Golf Tournament yesterday, and we were all amazed at the number flying over the Omni from beginning to end. And it was really the so it's not even the touch and goes. But it's the it's the flying patterns of learning how learning how to fly. So Councilmember Cohen, I wish I had a better answer for that. We'll 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 certainly continue to track. Erie's been great partners from the city of Erie. We're close with 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 their staff and CMO. And we'll continue to pay attention.
And I don't know enough about this process, how it works. I'm not curious whether the FAA would have to approve such traffic. Whether there's a public comment period. If the residents in our wards are seeing this substantial increase of planes touching going over their homes, what recourse do they have? And is there any recourse the sitting county Broomfield would have?
Nancy, let's I'm going to field this one off to you.
This is not a great answer. We are fully preempted on this area of flight patterns. While there might be some agency work that where there would be public comment and an opportunity to involve, I know the Community Noise Roundtable had tried that avenue, but there were there were even issues there. And that was only if the CNR had a unanimous sort of, you know, unanimous view on what to be done. But this is, we have absolutely no jurisdiction on flight patterns.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ward.
Hey, Mayor. I think this question is probably going to go to Nancy. I know that was a council member had emailed this in earlier, but what happens if we don't approve this IGA?
Thank you, Councilmember Ward. As we mentioned, this IGA is one tool to meet the standards and specs requirement for a type of performance guarantee, letter of credit or letter of responsibility. I imagine that Jeffco will use one of the other options, either a letter of credit or a letter of responsibility.
The reason I ask it is I think some people might see this as a opportunity for us to stop a particular development on property we don't own or have control over. But either way, Jefferson County is going to move forward with this development, whether or not this IGA exists because there are alternative avenues.
Correct, correct. This IGA is very specific to the construction needed to move this infrastructure that we've been talking about.
Thank you. That's
All right. Thank you. Any other council questions? I have a couple of questions. So we do have, you know, tracking to see where the traffic is picking up, and it has been picking up a lot around Erie going from RMA to Erie. So if these these flight patterns change, there's no opportunity for public comment or filing a concern to the FAA?
Oh, Mayor, I I believe you could file a concern. I mean, the FAA does have options where you can file a concern. I just don't want anyone to think that sitting county of Broomfield, Superior, Erie, any of the local governments have the ability to foresee FAA to change those flight patterns.
And and my question to you, I guess, is, you know, with the flight schools, is there a maximum of how many flight schools you can house and and safely operate? You don't control what they do in the air, but you do control what's on the ground. So if they if a bunch more flight schools want to come to this new area, would that just be okay? Like, there's no limits or no guardrails?
Sure, that that's a great question. And I I should mention that as a recipient of federal funds, we're bound by airport sponsor assurances that our commissioners sign when we accept a federal grant, one of which is that we cannot kind of unjustly, I'm not getting the words exactly right, but discriminate against a certain type of aeronautical use to include flight schools. However, that's kind of you have to look at market demand or even safety. But we do get interested parties who perhaps want to open up a new flight school on the field. One actually opened up as a sub lessy in shelter aviation, which was one of our fixed base operators. And as long as they meet the minimum standards of the airport, they're allowed to do that. But I guess it's it comes down to kind of market demand and how we evaluate development proposals or how we lease land going forward. I would say flight schools rely on relatively inexpensive infrastructure. And so they are leasing out of a few older buildings on the field and using some of the ramp space that's kind of older and existed already. That's why I I think in terms of the Southwest development area, prices to develop on that side will be a lot higher. And I I am just guessing, not as a developer, but just guessing will be kind of cost prohibitive for a typical flight school model to work. But in terms of safety, that's something we'd have to evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I guess I was referring more to capacity, right? At some point, there's got to be a capacity consideration. You can't have like an unlimited amount of flight planes, you know, training in the air.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's again, that would be under the the federal preemption in terms of how they view the capacity of using the runways and the airspace. I would say naturally, as like if I was a flight student or an instructor or a school, if I'm having to wait twenty minutes to take off and I'm paying an hourly rate for that aircraft, and I'm not getting any instructor and, you know, training use out of that, it would it would cause me to seek to open up a flight school at a different airport. So there's naturally some sort of upper constraint on that, and we are fairly busy. I don't can't speak, I don't own or or operate flight schools, so I don't know what their considerations are.
Well, I thank you for that. I might, I guess my only other concern is with your plan being updated in twenty twenty-seven on the airport influence zones. We have developments for, you know, residential, non-residential that would be impacted in the future. So it's something that we have to we have to consider future projects we see until we have those updated plans from you guys.
Yeah. And we I will say, I said at the beginning, but we've always appreciated the referrals your planning staff send us and the the great collaboration we have with your staff. And I know they have sent developers to us to discuss whether a particular use is is appropriate off the end of a runway. And so we actually really appreciate that and and appreciate that collaboration.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming tonight.
You're welcome.
All right. That I think that's it. So first is council's consideration of proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one zero five. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one zero five, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County for the construction of a new taxiway, taxiway K at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport.
Thank you. Before asking for a motion, I want to remind everyone that item six C contains an intergovernmental agreement which requires two-thirds approval of council. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Marsh Houlson?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for answering all of our questions. The decision before us is, you know, whether we have a performance guarantee with Jefferson County or we don't. But you know, voting against this measure doesn't prohibit the construction of taxiway K. It sounds like that that is moving forward from, you know, the website that I viewed earlier, taxiway K is something that has been discussed and is and is needed out there at the the airport. So to Jefferson County and RMMA, I would kindly request that, you know, as the development decisions of the Southwest development area do move forward, that that doesn't include additional training, flight training schools, and that it would select those businesses that do not significantly increase air traffic over the surrounding communities. You know, we're we're looking for great businesses out there, but hopefully we don't, you know, significantly increase those flight traffic in the area with those business decisions. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lim.
Um, I just wanted to refer back to what the RMA representative said. I had sent to some of my Ward three residents who are who write about the concern about the noise that they should participate try to participate in the Part one fifty Airport Airport Noise Study. It has an open house on this Thursday, July the tenth at the Omni from six to seven thirty for anyone who's impacted and interested. Thank you.
Councilmember Cohen.
Real quickly, just to reiterate what Mayor Protem said, that, you know, it's very tempting to vote no because of to send a message about increasing traffic. There's obviously not the appropriate vehicle to do that. But I do hope that we maybe engage with our senators and congresspeople to figure out what the FAA is doing and see what we can do to not repeat what's happening at RMMA to the folks under the flight paths at Erie. I just recent last week drove from Kansas City to Denver, and you you go by a lot of vacant airports that could use some traffic and seem like a better place to run a ton of flight schools over sparsely populated areas instead of keep running more and more and more touch and go schools over more densely populated areas. It's just more noise and more potential for disaster. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Right then, Council. Councilmember Ward, sorry.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what Mayor Protem Schaaf said. This obviously is not the vehicle on which to kind of make a point that we really as a community for Broomfield, particularly in Ward two, I know with my Skystone residents, that expansion of especially flight schools is not appropriate, given the environment that has built up around the airport. I will be voting yes on this because I think it's probably the best vehicle, given what staff has put in to assure our infrastructure that's underneath the airport is properly moved. But I just do want to reiterate Mayor Protem Schaaf's statement of when you do go through this process of figuring out who's going to go there, really keep in mind the fact that you are a neighbor to so many surrounding communities for Broomfield, Superior, Westminster, and be mindful of the impacts that those businesses will have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no more discussion, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally. Thank you. That was a yes. Oh, council members have entered their votes, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Thank you all very much. Next, under action items this evening is council's consideration of an ordinance on first reading related to accessory dwelling units. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor. And joining us tonight is Ted Harburg. He is going to walk us through this item. He's the senior planner. And everybody's pretty excited about this ADU code update. It's not new to Broomfield. We've had it in place for a while. Mr. Harburg, please walk us through this.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm Ted Harburg, Senior Planner. The topic of this presentation is regarding the proposed accessory dwelling unit or ADU code updates. Next slide, please. To start with some background, Broomfield's current ADU regulations were approved in twenty nineteen and allow ADUs in all zone districts where single-unit dwellings are permitted. In May of last year, the state passed new legislation aimed at permitting more ADUs in Colorado municipalities. At the January twenty-first study session earlier this year, council directed staff to proceed with the code updates being presented this evening and provide a direction to allow a path for tiny homes to be permitted as ADUs. Next slide. In this and the next slide, I will compare Broomfield's current zoning standards for ADUs to what is being proposed as a part of this code update. So Broomfield's current standards allow ADUs to be located either within the principal dwelling unit, attached to the principal dwelling unit, or detached from the principal dwelling unit. And no change is proposed to where ADUs can be located. Broomfield's regulations require that ADUs be no larger than fifty percent of the principal dwelling unit footprint, but never more than eight hundred square feet. The proposed code update would allow all properties to have an ADU that is at least five hundred feet. And note, that's an allowance, not a requirement. But it would otherwise keep other requirements for ADUs to be no larger than fifty percent of the principal dwelling unit footprint and never more than eight hundred square feet. The current regulations require one off-street parking space for every ADU. And this was actually addressed as a part of the parking code updates that were approved by council on May thirteenth of this year. Next slide. The current regulations require the property owner to occupy either the principal structure or the ADU on the lot as their primary residence. This proposed code update would allow the construction and the use of ADUs on properties that are not occupied by the owner. The current regulations do not allow ADUs to be used for short-term rentals, and these require a license, and a license cannot be issued to an ADU. There is no change proposed to the short-term rental license prohibition. The current regulations do not allow ADUs to be located in temporary structures like RVs or mobile homes. And these proposed code updates would allow ADUs in tiny homes and manufactured homes. But they would still prohibit ADUs from being located in temporary structures or in vehicles such as RVs. And with these proposed changes, the Broomfield code would be in totally in compliance with recent state legislation. Next slide. So a key technical update included in this proposed ordinance is to update definitions and terms used to describe different types of factory-built structures. So just to go through the three main ones of these, a mobile home is now an outdated term that was previously used to describe what are more informally called trailer homes. A mobile home most accurately describes a structure manufactured prior to nineteen seventy-six. New mobile home installations are not permitted under modern building codes, and the proposed code update would not permit mobile homes as ADUs. A manufactured home is the modern terminology for structures built to current safety standards, and these are most typically what you would see installed in a mobile home park. This proposed code update would permit manufactured homes to be used as ADUs, provided that the structure is clad in materials or colors to match the principal structure. Modular refers to any other type of structure that is built in a factory, and modular structures are currently a permitted type of of structure for an ADU. Next slide. So this proposed code update would all So this proposed code update would also create new definitions for tiny home and for tiny house. Both of these structure types are defined as being 400 square feet or less in size. However, they are different in other ways. Primarily, a tiny home is a factory-built structure that is constructed on a vehicle chassis and then certified by the state. A tiny house, by contrast, is constructed onsite on a permanent foundation and would be certified for occupancy by Broomfield. The proposed code updates would allow both tiny homes and tiny houses when clad in materials or colors to match the principal structure. Next slide. And then this is an ordinance summary. So, um, these are the specific things that this ordinance, if approved, would do. This would add or update definitions for certain terms, including manufactured home, mobile home, modular home, tiny home, and tiny house. The ordinance would permit manufactured homes and tiny homes for use as an ADU when installed with a foundation that complies with the IRC, and this may include tie-downs. It would clarify that modular homes and tiny houses are permitted for use as an ADU when clad in materials or colors to match the principal structure. It would update the side setback requirements for ADUs so that they are no more restrictive than the setbacks required for the principal residence, the primary dwelling unit. It would remove references to familial relationships, generally generally replacing the term single family with single unit, consistent with other code updates. It would remove the requirement for the property owner to occupy either the principal structure or the accessory dwelling unit on the lot as their primary residence. And finally, it would clean up sections of chapter 1742 mobile home communities to remove or modify those out-of-date regulations and definitions that might be in conflict with the current direction to allow tiny homes as ADUs. Next slide. If directed to move forward, a second reading and public hearing will be scheduled for September 9th of this year. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to speak on this item, now is the time. Tiny, tiny homes, tiny houses. No, you want to speak? Make your way to the podium, ma'am. Get your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
I think it's more of a question than a comment. This Sandy Anderson from the Broadlands. What I'm not understanding is I always thought that the ADUs were being developed to use for family relationships or extensions to disabled children, senior citizens needing housing with, you know, their so, you know, with their children, that type of stuff. But if in fact, the ADUs don't require a resident to live in either the home or the ADU, are we really just setting up an opportunity for? I don't know the right word to say this, but um, an opportunity for development to happen, interlot development just for rentals, which would kind of go against the affordability kind of focus for the city. Am I making any sense to you guys in the question I'm trying to ask? Wouldn't it just drive up non-resident investments in housing? And I hope my question makes sense.
Thank you. Um, well, it's not really a Q and A. I don't know if you can address any of that.
I would not be able to address whether or not it would increase, for example, uh, that kind of for-profit, uh, construction of ADUs. I can say that the reason this is was included in the state legislation is because of the concern that when there's an owner occupancy requirement, it makes it very difficult for banks to lend money to do an ADU project. If people want to pull out equity and build an ADU, oftentimes banks will not extend that loan if there's an owner occupancy requirement. And that's the root, the main reason that's been given by the state as to why that should be, or they would like that removed from municipal regulations.
All right. Can I ask a quick question, too? We've allowed them since 2019. How many have been built?
Broomfield has approved seven ADUs to date.
In six years, we've got seven. Okay, that should help. Um, they're cost prohibitive. So, um, we'll go to my council next for questions. Would you press your button? Ah, Councilmember Cohen.
Just to follow on Sandy's question. So in my single unit neighborhood, there are some rentals and there are homeowners. So the rental owners could, if I wanted to rent out my house, I could, and if I had the space, I could put in an ADU in my backyard and rent both of them while living somewhere else.
Long-term rentals, yes. Yes.
And that is defined as what?
I believe it's, uh, one month or more. Yes. Thirty days or more.
Okay, so that's potential. We haven't seen anything like that. But that's potentially what could happen, and that's sort of the purpose of what the state wants us to do is to increase density, but also the ADU would presumably be a fairly cheap rental, maybe, um, in some of these neighborhoods, correct?
Yes, like the, the, uh, the objective is to increase ADU production.
Do we know what? I don't know to the mayor's question, what the ADUs that are here. Are they substantially more affordable in terms of, I assume they're rented? What they go for?
You know, that's something we could look into. I don't have any data on what they're being rented for, even if they're being rented as opposed to being used for for private use or for family use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Shaft.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I appreciated learning about the differentiation between tiny homes and tiny house. So thank you for that. I I did have some questions in the section seventeen dash thirty-two dash one sixty, and this is in section D. So this is regarding the maximum size of that ADU. So if I read this correctly from your presentation, which I think I now have a better grasp of, if a, if a primary residence is 900 square feet, 50% of that would allow, uh, or let's go with 800, 800 square feet for the principal residence. 50% allow that would allow that ADU to be 400 square feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so but, uh, within that section D, it would allow regardless of how large that, uh, or how small that principal dwelling is, it would allow that ADU to be built up to 500 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then, uh, regardless of, of if, if it was a thousand feet or more, the largest that that ADU can be built is 500 square feet, though. Actually, sorry, 800 square feet.
Yes, that is correct. 800 square feet is the largest that Broomfield would allow an ADU to be.
Okay, so I think I, I think I get all that. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your question, Ms. Anderson. We, I was thinking this along the same lines. In fact, I had typed up my questions beforehand and I thought, what's the rationale for removing the owner occupancy requirement? And you answered, it was the banks essentially are will not approve otherwise. That's interesting. I'll have to look into that. And then I do worry about the rise in investor-owned properties. It does seem like in the past years, we've had ADUs um, and that we don't see a rise in that, but that could change in the future. So my last question then is, um, will there be any incentives like fee waivers, expedited permitting for homeowners building ADUs for affordable or family housing? Have we gone down that route? And I know that it's cost prohibitive. What makes it mostly cost prohibitive? Is it the tap fees? That's what I'm hearing. And if so, could we lower a tap fee for an ADU? Or what makes it cost prohibitive?
All of it. It's a relative term, cost prohibitive. Um, the building materials are expensive. The, the, the cement fixture is expensive. We're just getting ready to have additional conversations from the enterprise perspective of waiving those. So while we waive, uh, and I'm sorry, I can't quite figure out the beeping on the computer.
I can't hear it.
While we waive it for the resident, we have to take out of this pot in order to pay for this pot. And so again, it's not, we don't forego the water tap fees. The city picks up, um, what those costs are. So from making it more affordable, that's, that's tough. And incentivizing, um, I think this is a great conversation to have after we do our budget in October, when we have a much better sense of, of, of where we are and what that looks like for, for any incentivizing housing across the board, including the, including the ADUs.
Thank you. Did you have an additional answer?
Yes, thank you. Uh, and, uh, our chief building official, Mr. Tim Pate, just reminded me that, um, ADUs are required to share the same water and sewer tap as the principal residence. So there would never be a new tap for an ADU. They're actually required to use the same water and sewer services as the house on the property. And I know there was multiple parts to your question. Uh, in terms of incentivizing, the state does have a grant program. It's an ADU supportive jurisdiction grant program. And at the January 21st study session, we discussed some of those strategies. Council did not direct staff to move forward. Um, however, we could revisit some of those strategies to incentivize, if given direction to do so.
Yeah, I just don't want to give up local control. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, the last question, too, then, what is the estimated permitting cost for a typical ADU then? Under the revised ordinance, does that change and what is it now?
Yeah, that is something I would need to look into. I don't, um, know what a typical permitting cost is, but I'll ask Mr. Pate to see if he can answer that for us.
Sorry. Thank you, Tim Pate, Chief Building Official. Good to see everybody again. I couldn't answer that question right off the top, what average cost or permit costs are. There would be no difference in the way we assess a permit fee with the use tax just based on the value. It's based on the valuation of the project. Small 800, 600 square foot projects will probably be cost more per square foot than a large home, just because of the degree of trying to get the same subcontractors. The materials would be about the same, but the subcontractors are going to be put together. So that's, that's been my experience to see that. So the, the per square foot price will probably be a little higher, but the cost to build it will be less, of course. But like currently, new residential building is probably in the $250 per square foot range, maybe upwards closer to $300 for the production builders. So that's just for a source of comparison.
Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, just in future conversations, we could keep talking about just to make sure we have affordability and then that's why we're building ADUs. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember questions? Ain't none? Is council's consideration is proposed, a proposed ordinance number two two six five. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number two two six five to amend the Broomfield Municipal Code Title 17 to revise the regulations for accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading and ordered published in full? Councilmember Henkel. No move. Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holsen?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number two two six five. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally. There? Councilmember Ward?
My votes, yes.
Thank you. And all council members have entered their vote. And the results are nine to zero that passes unanimously. Thank you both very much. Well, it is eight oh four, so we're going to go ahead and take our 10-minute recess now. We'll be back at eight fifteen. Thank you. Next, under action items, staff will provide counsel with a report on the status of the 2025 property valuation. This item includes a Board of Equalization Resolution that council, sitting as the Board of Equalization, will consider. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize. Mr. Yamashita.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. Jay Yamashita, assessor. I'm here this evening to present the assessor report to the Board of Equalization on the status of the 2025 property valuation. This report is submitted pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute, which states that the assessor shall report the Board of Equalization, the valuation for assessment of all taxable property in the county. Assessor is also to provide a list of persons who have protested and their action in each case. Assessor is also required to provide counsel with the list of all persons who have failed to provide any personal property schedules, which are referenced as non filers of personal property declarations. Key dates and deadlines, April 15th was the deadline to file personal property schedules. June 13th through the 30th was the personal property appeal period. August 5th, hearing officer recommendations due to city council. And August 25th, abstract of assessment delivery deadline to the state. Non filers of personal property declaration, there were 82 non filers in 2025 as of April 15th. The personal property appeal period for 2025 started June 13th of 2025 and ended on June 30th, 2025. So the upcoming processes that will be taking place over the next several weeks, Broomfield will complete the protest of the property valuations for both real and personal property for 2025. The city council appointed hearing officers will conduct the hearings and make recommendations to city council no later than August 5th, 2025 for final determination. The assessor will complete the role of all taxable property within the county and no later than August 25th, prepare the abstract of the assessment for delivery to the property tax administrator of the state. As the period of time between the conclusion of the protest hearings and the deadline for the delivery of the abstract of assessment is short, staff is requesting that the mayor be authorized to sign the 2025 extractive assessment when completed by staff after the completion of the hearings on August 5th, 2025 and prior to the deadline of August 25th, 2025. Proposed Resolution 2025-98 BOE would provide this authorization for mayor, for the mayor to sign the 2025 abstract of assessment once completed. This is the same process that we completed in 2024. So as we go through, we're going to go through the numbers and these are assessed values. And this is the value change from December 31st, 2024 and June 30th of 2025 after assessor level appeals. So for real property, December 31st of 2024, we were at $2,991,72,910. In 2025, after appeals, we were at $2,252,402,730. And that was a change of $38,670,180 or a 2% change, a negative 2% change. For personal property in December 31st of 2024, we had an assessed value of 162,038,470. And for 2025, we are 151,515,340, a change of negative 10,523,130 or a minus 6% change. For state assessed, we are at set in, in December 31st of 2024, we are at 72,217,600. And for June 30th of 2025, we're at $69,888,010. That is a difference of negative 2,329,590 or a minus of 3%. Oil and gas, December 31st of 2024 was 293,744,140. And as of June 30th of 2025, that's 151,424,400 or a change of a negative 142,319,740 or a negative 48% change. Bless you. So total taxable value was 2,619,73,120 for December 31st of 2024. And as of June 30th of 2025, that number is now 2,425,230,480 or a change of 193,842,640, which is roughly 7%. So then we have exempt values. We had 281,908,630 as of December 31st of 2024. And as of June 30th of 2025, that number is 279,752,080. And that is a difference of 2,156,550 or a negative 1% change. So our total assessed value is 2 million as of December 31st, 2024, And as of June 30th of 2025, that number is 2,704,982,560 or a change of a negative 195,999,190, basically 7%. So it's important to note that the above figures are subject to change prior to the abstract and certification on August 25th of 2025. The final valuations for state assessed properties will not be available until August and the above figures are not intended for budgeting purposes. Reappraisal year implications is important to note that 2025 is a reappraisal year and value changes made this year will be used to determine property tax for tax years 2025 payable 26 and 2026 payable 27. So in the process, we've got to do, my personal property appraiser has to do what is best information available evaluation process for personal property valuations when somebody does not file and we see their property. We see that it's over $56,000 and that becomes an appraiser judgment. They will have to go out and we have market data where we have to sign these BIA values based on information that my appraiser has gone through and, and found out different companies that resemble somebody who didn't file. And that's the way we arrive at a BIA value. So the BIA values must be based on itemized list of personal property associated values. And data sources are, the assessor has a variety of data sources available when determining values according to BIA valuation. The data sources include the following comparable property records like businesses, any historical data that might have been rendered in prior years and supplier sales catalogs for equipment and machinery and equipment. The proposed action, action or recommendation that we are recommending, if council desires to authorize the mayor to sign the 2025 abstract of assessment, when it is complete, the appropriate motion is that Resolution 2025-98-BOE be adopted. The alternative is to not adopt 2025-98 BOE, in which case staff will come back to city council at the August 12th meeting to obtain the same approval of the abstract assessment. Staff does not recommend this option due to the short turnaround time for these reports. And that's currently what I have. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Yamashita. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Please make your way to the podium. Any public comment online? No? Okay, questions from council are next. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just go back to the big elephant on the chart? And what happened with oil and gas and it's 48% decrease?
So as we know with oil and gas, there are three different factors that are going to affect the value. One, as we know, in the first five years, we're going to have the most production out of all of ours. And that's where we're going to get the most money generated out of. Secondly, what we find out is the classification changed this year from very good to average equipment to the nerf, which we receive from the reporting oil and gas companies. And third is the market value of oil and gas affects it as well. So in the insight of what we've had so far this year, it is the fact that one, we're probably getting past the one to five year period where it's starting to drop. Secondly, the equipment itself is dropping in value itself. And third, as we know, market as it stands right now, fuel prices are kind of low right now. And so that dictates as well in the valuation.
So depreciation of equipment, change in practices or what they're doing. But on the third factor is quite volatile. So is that just a snapshot of oil prices at a particular moment?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that moment in time is. Again, it's a self-reporting tax that we get. And again, the division property tax makes all the decisions as far as how we depreciate everything with the bells tables.
Okay, thank you. And one last real quick question, the changes the legislature made. How much impact did that have with that changing the how the assessment?
Right, so the biggest impact to our department was the software. We had, we're very fortunate that we are with probably 30 other meetings, 30 other counties. And so, you know, better when you have more numbers per se. But the difference being is that is what every, all assessors ran up against was that assessed two different assessment rates. Because basically, and everybody, if you want to try and calculate it out, it's basically taking your valuation. Just so you know. So basically, the non-school assessment rate was 6.25%. So if you take whatever value you have on your home times 6.25%. And so the mail levies, I, I did the mail levies for Boulder Valley School District. So non-school mail levies was 45.541. So basically, if you take a $500,000 house for local government at 6.25%, it brings it down to 31,250 assessed. That times the mail levy of 45.541, which is the local government, which does not include any school district mail levies. It's just basically North Metro, us and so forth, any other RTD or whatever else is out there. And so if you take a $500,000 house at the local government rate, you're paying $1,423.15 roughly. So the school assessment rate is at 7.07%. So if you take the 500,000 times the 7.05%, you come up with 35,250, the assessed value. The mail levies for the school district for Boulder Valley was 48.175. So if you take that value, 35,250 times 48.175, you're at $1,698.17 and you add those two together and that's your tax bill.
Yeah, it's very helpful. So basically, after the state action, the property tax for the sitting kind of even went down comparatively to the impact, what's being assessed.
Well, the values.
Values are different for the city county versus the school.
Correct.
Correct. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Henkel?
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot of us had that question about oil and gas. I saw Gene's hand go down after that. I do just want to piggyback on that. You know, there was the 48% change in oil and gas. The assessed value is pretty substantial. Are we ever going to see that go up, do you think?
It really depends on whether we start doing production again. I mean, depending upon where production is in the year that they supply the info, well, they supply it to us on an annual basis. Personal property, oil and gas is all done on an annual basis, whereas real property is done every other year. The hope again, I don't, I can't predict the future unfortunately. So the hope is that maybe we get more production in oil and gas or they get new equipment or that they start a new site. There's all these different factors unfortunately that I can't predict what's going to happen with the future. The hope is that we will get some increase in oil and gas production or valuation moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I just wanted Okay, thank you very much. And then I just wanted to ask about the process, and maybe this is a question for Nancy. You know, authorizing the mayor to sign the abstract, is this something, jog my memory, is this something we do on only reappraisal years, or how does that work every?
No, I think we do it every year. So it's just the process, though. I think what happens at most county levels is it's just a pass-through basically because we present the numbers and then the numbers will change, and those numbers will be seen by the mayor, and then she will sign off on that. The numbers are what they're going to be no matter what. And and you know what I mean? It's just going to be the numbers that we get based on the hearings that are going to take place at second level or the Board of Equalization hearings.
And Councilmember Henkel, we have a challenge with our council scheduling, with our council meeting scheduling that other counties don't have because they have a full-time council that is available most days of the week for a quick meeting. This is a way to try to honor your schedule and have that delegated authority to the mayor so we don't have to call another special meeting in need.
Yeah, we have a full-time mayor. She's not really paid full-time, unfortunately.
Correct.
So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm also the chair of the Board of Equalization. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Henkel, and Councilmember Wynn.
Thank you, Mayor. And of course, you know, thank you so much, Mr. Yamashita, for your presentation. My question is pretty quick, and I know it's a little bit speculative, but what if the property values go up next year and we see a kind of like a roller coaster situation where things are good this year or, you know, next year, and then things are bad the year after, twenty twenty-seven, like what what happens?
Unfortunately, we do what the market tells us to do. So basically, we look at a two-year data collection period. So in this data collection period, it was by first of, what year were we, twenty-five, so it's twenty-four. July first of two thousand and twenty-two through June thirty of twenty-four. In that two-year data collection period, we look at all the analysis of all the sales that took place. And that's what we use to value the property for twenty-five and twenty-six. So all our data is very historical. We tell everybody, do not use our values for any other reason except for tax purposes because the data is just too old. So what happens is unfortunately, if the market does increase, we will, we will have to show that in the valuations because we, again, are required by statute to look at that analysis to set the values. And here in the state of Colorado, you can only use the market approach to set residential valuation. You cannot use anything else.
I appreciate the honesty, and again, this is a lot of work, so thank you for what you do, and that those are my questions, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just, this is the question that just keeps coming up in my mind as I was looking at this, is this non-fileer list? Is there a, and there's, there's so many reputable organizations on here, is there a reason why? Why is, what is the reason or speculative reasons why they're on this non-fileer list?
That there, it's just that they, they get, so personal property is a self-reporting tax. Um, we do, at the county level, we go out and we tell them because the state will not tell them at the level when they get their license or whatever, say, hey, somebody from the county is going to come around and tell you there's personal property. Outside of that, though, we mail them declaration schedules every year to whatever corporate office, local office, wherever, we try and get it to them. And if they don't file it, we don't have a choice but to sign a board of it. Best information available assessment. So those people who don't file, I can't force them to file. It's a self-reporting tax in the sense that they are to report to us, but we go out and try and get them to do, to help us with that, but sometimes you just can't get it. And so we do have an auditing program, so my appraisal, my personal property appraiser will look for the non-fileers first to go after, but sometimes, again, when you're dealing with somebody in corporate in another state, sometimes they just don't want to deal with you. And it's, it doesn't make sense, especially with the BIA assessment, but the BI assessment is too low, then they don't care. Do you know what I mean? But when it goes over, then then they're like, okay, now we need to do something.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn.
I was curious along the same line as Councilmember Anderson. I mean, there are some prominent development names on this list that are not national. We know that. And so is this a tactic that some developers use?
It could be. I mean, I can't give you why they do not file. It's a requirement. Like I said, we, we try and get to every single company out there. My personal property appraiser goes out every January and canvases every single business that he has just to make sure nothing has changed or somebody new is there, or they have moved or whatever the case may be, but we do try our best to get them to file.
And is this, do you find that there, it's a repeating offenders list that, you know, it's the same people every year that decide not to file?
Couldn't be. I mean, like I said, I I try and make sure my appraiser goes out to those first because they didn't file, and then we can get an itemized asset listing hopefully out of that visit. And that's part of the audit process.
And how, and what's the, do you have any estimate of the cost to us as the city and county of Broomfield of these people deciding not to file?
Until we find out what they actually have there is the only way we're going to be able to figure that out.
Yeah, I was thinking too, the cost of our time.
Right. Well, and that's just part of the process for all of us. All counties have got personal property appraisers. The cost to us is trying to go out and get that information, but again, the state requires us to have an audit plan in place, which we do, and they they audit that audit plan.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Councilmember Anderson, do you have to go, want to go again? Okay.
Okay, so I kind of have a follow-up to Councilmember Lynn's question. So is is there this opportunity where, or how much time when staff has to do this estimate, is it a significant amount of time for like one filer? Or is it just kind of?
No, we have, we have enough data sets to know what type of business it is, and we have enough people that do file that we can use that as a good representative of what that value should be. We look at square footages of offices, how much square footage they're taking, and take that into account of when we're looking at the valuation process.
So the burden isn't that great to generate this estimate for them?
Right.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. You wanted to add something?
Kind of going back to to Councilmember Wynn's question that assessments are done in arrears, and a great example of that is when it spiked for our community. We were in the middle of inflation, supply chain issues for evaluation that was done two years before. So it doesn't take any current information into account. We're also, we'll have additional conversations on August nineteenth for an economic update, which will include kind of the precursor to the budgets. We anticipate a six million dollar hit on, for specifically for property taxes. We do not anticipate, although we don't have a crystal ball, obviously, we don't anticipate that if there were any increased valuation that it would make up for the delta between the legislature, the legislators decrease from the original seven point one. So seven point one was the original residential rate. Twenty-nine was the original commercial rate. So it's a double whammy. So the rate has.
Actually, they used to be the same. They were both twenty-nine or twenty-eight, remember, before Tabor?
Same. Well, just, I'm just speaking of before, within the la, with, within the last two years. So then you have a decrease in valuation, and you have a decrease on the rate attached to that decreased valuation. So we do not anticipate that those amounts are going to go up. It's going to be a consistent six to eight million, particularly when you're talking about twenty-nine percent assessment rate for commercial. Commercial valuations are substantially down. And then the rate of that valuation is decreasing from twenty-nine to twenty-five over the next few years. So again, there's a multitude of of deltas that that will have to, for all counties and and cities to a lesser degree, have to be accommodating to what 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 those amounts look like. And again, we'll talk more about this on on the nineteenth and and what those differences, what those differences look like.
Thank you, Manager Hoffman. I just have one question, Mr. Yamashita. So the state legislature and the property tax commission, as you know, made the decision to lower the assessment rates in response to the ballot question to circumvent that. So that's why we had to go so low. And then the valuations went down organically. Do you feel like maybe the legislature overcorrected?
Personally. Dang it.
First, I do.
No, I mean, it is what it is. You know, we, it is, we just have to deal. Unfortunately, we get to deal with all, everything that they want to do, and that's the hard part for me, and my staff is is dealing with that. So it is what it is, and I I'm very fortunate to have a good staff that rolls with the punches.
Well, thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
So now, next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash nine eight dash BOE. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash ninety-eight dash BOE, authorizing the mayor to review and sign the two thousand and twenty-five abstract of assessment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution, Mayor Protem Shah?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Doug Adio?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please sit your vote for a vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As I guess, all councilmembers have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. And next item under action items this evening is council's consideration on first reading of six proposed ordinances on ballot questions to amend the Broomfield Charter. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members of the community. We're here to talk about potential ballot questions for the November two thousand and twenty-five ballot. This is a continuation of the discussion that council actually started a few years ago with the need to update the charter and convene the Charter Review Commission. Most recently, we talked about these concepts at our study session on June seventeenth. So at that meeting, council directed staff to draft up some proposed ordinances, and we're going to discuss and vote on those six tonight. Next slide. So as a reminder, Broomfield became a home rule city in nineteen seventy-four. In two thousand and one, when Broomfield became a city and a county, there was a minor update to the charter that just said anywhere there's a reference to city, it shall mean city and county, but there really hasn't been a big review of the charter since actually that initial adoption. There's been some amendments here and there, including our amendments last year in two thousand and twenty-four. This council established a charter review committee. They presented some recommendations. Councils had multiple discussions at public meetings about changes that could be made to the ordinance. We're going to, like I said, talk about six of those potential changes tonight. There'll be a second reading on any ordinance that passes first reading on August twelfth, and then the election will take place in November. The voters have the ultimate approval. Next slide. So I just want, for the public and anyone who's listening, there are, this is not approving any changes to the charter tonight. This is an ordinance to put something on the ballot. If approved again, those come back August twelfth, public meeting. And the voters, as always, have the ultimate approval to what changes get made in our charter. Next slide. All right. So in a short nutshell summary, we've got six. One is a general update and revision. A second addresses council qualifications. A third one would address vacancies, what what means, what causes a vacancy and how they're filled. The fourth one is a code of ethics requirement. The fifth one addresses emergency ordinances and when they would take effect. And the sixth one is intergovernmental agreements being approved by a majority vote rather than a two-thirds vote, and the option for delegation, which is similar to what we just talked about in the assessor's report. All right, we'll dive right in. Next slide. So the first one is proposed ordinance two-two-seven-six, which is a general cleanup. As the proposed question states, without changing substance, shall the charter be updated to reflect pretty much the current status of Broomfield as a city and county? So some of these, actually, I'll go through the summary of the list of changes. It does change city and county throughout. Again, that's not substantive. We know exactly what the charter means when it says city. It removes municipal or changes it to city and county or Broomfield unless the context is very specific to municipal such as municipal court. Changes a municipal election to a coordinated election. Because we are a city and county, our clerk is always doing a coordinated election. She has a responsibility to make sure that any elections of any other bodies within our jurisdictions are coordinated with our election. So we just thought that was a more appropriate term. It removed outdated language from the original nineteen seventy-four charter. It references Broomfield's voter-approved state constitutional amendment. Now, again, this isn't a substantive change. We know in my office, you all know, sitting at the diocesan, when we read the charter, we've got to take into account our constitutional amendment. But if you don't know about that, you don't know that you need to check the constitutional amendment. So I think it's important we get that reference in there, and we acknowledge that that constitutional amendment is one of the most important governing documents that the city and county of Broomfield has. And then it add language. This is sort of, this is a very small, but I think important addition would add language that acknowledges your ability as a council that sits as a board of county commissioners to create boards to perform county functions. Again, you have that authority, I believe, under the Broomfield Constitutional Amendment, but this is a, if we're doing a cleanup, this is a good ad to put in this general update. So that's two-two-seven-six. Next slide. The actual ballot question would look like this, without changing the substance, shall the charter be updated? And then it lists out sort of five summaries of what those changes are. I'm going to jump ahead to an announcement that I'll make at the end, which is, we got feedback last year that residents wanted more information about the ballot question. So one of the things we're going to do this year is create a Broomfield blue book of sorts where we offer them not advocacy. We're not going to be going pro or con on any of the questions that are approved, but we're going to provide some information and and try to explain in more detail what these changes mean, what they would look like in the charter, where they can get more information, where they can submit questions. So we're going to try to provide more information because I recognize that even this question has a lot of lingo in it, and people might not understand what it means. So my hope is that we try to keep the questions as simple as possible, but we will, we are committed to provide additional information to the residents. All right, next slide. All right, the second ordinance to consider is a a ballot question that would amend section four point six to add a provision that an elected official for Broomfield cannot hold another publicly elected office. Publicly is important. We're not talking about HOA boards, anything like that, private corporations, nonprofits. We're talking about metro districts, school districts, state office, federal office. This is not currently in charter. Right now, we have an ethical rule for our elected individuals that prohibits you from serving in incompatible offices. That's, that's sort of a hard thing to have in Broomfield, but let's say Broomfield was Silicon City. You wouldn't be able to serve as your county commissioner. So if you were a Westminster City Council person, you wouldn't be able to serve on the Adams County Commission. So that's the incompatible office. This would actually put the requirement in the charter. Next slide. And the question is very, very similar to that first slide. Next slide. The third question addresses vacancies for members of council. So the, next slide. Oh, yeah, that one. The first one is adding a new requirement that would create a vacancy, pretty much saying that a vacancy would be created if an elected official fails to attend fifty percent of the council's meetings convened in a twelve-month period. So it's a rolling twelve-month period, looking, let's say today, looking back twelve months. As soon as a council member hit that required fifty percent, it is as if they moved out of the community. They immediately are not eligible to hold that office and the office. it is as if they moved out of the community. They immediately are not eligible to hold that office and the office is immediately vacant. Right now, there is no attendance requirement for the city and county of Broomfield, either in your council rules, in our charter, in our code. The next change would be the timeframe for council to elect a person to fill a vacancy. Right now, it's 30 days. We've had a few vacancies recently, and that's fast. That's really fast, especially if you have a vacancy around the Fourth of July or around the holiday season. It just makes it very challenging when we have limited council meetings in those months. So the suggestion from staff was to increase that to 60 days. And the last change on this section would be a vacancy in the office of the mayor would be filled by the current mayor Protem, who would then serve until that next coordinated election. Right now, the mayor is filled by a special election unless the vacancy occurs within four months of the next election. Then it's a election by council and that person serves until that next election, which is what we had when Mayor Quinn resigned. Mayor Casterda was elected by council to finish the remainder few months of his term. The last time there was a mayoral vacancy was in the, I wrote it down, was in the 90s. I want to say there's only been one other during, in that time, there was a special election. All right, next slide. This question is a little long, but it but it hits on those changes. Next slide. All right, 2279 would propose a ballot question that council must adopt a code of ethics. Want to be clear, council has already adopted a code of ethics. We have a code of ethics in the Broomfield Municipal Code. It was adopted in 2001, amended in 2007. What this does, and this is a recommendation from the Charter Review Committee, is put the requirement in charter. Right now, council could repeal that whole code of ethics and wouldn't need to replace it. This would always require that there is a code of ethics in our in our code. It doesn't say what the code, sorry, it doesn't say exactly what the code would have to say, but it does make clear that this ethics code would meet all the requirements of Amendment 41. Amendment 41 is a state ethics code that applies to municipal governments unless they have their own ethics code. Next slide. So that question just asked, shall it be added to the code that we adopt and maintain a code of ethics? The governing, I think there was a question about the listing of the areas. There were three areas that the Charter Review Committee wanted to make sure those concepts were covered. Excuse me. There are three concepts that the Charter Review Commission wanted to make sure were covered by this question, by the ethics code. It had to discover, excuse me, it had to cover disclosure of conflicts of interest, recusals from votings and other standards of a code or conduct. That was language from the Charter Review Commission, which is why I included it in this ballot question. Next slide. All right, this one's on emergency ordinances. Emergency ordinances in the original charter language, and and that's the language we have today, go into effect eight days from passage. I couldn't find out the reason for that, but I have to believe it has to do with a publication requirement. That's just my assumption. I'll be open about that. I don't know exactly why, but that is my assumption. Back in 1974, when we did have publication in newspapers, and that's how people got worried about things that were adopted. Staff requested and the Charter Review Committee agreed to make this recommendation that emergency ordinances would go into effect immediately upon passage. Emergency ordinances are are usually are are required to be needed for public peace, health and safety. These are not public health orders. These are ordinances that we have to pass very quickly to make sure they're in effect that day so we can address behavior. Council has approved only four emergency ordinances in the past five years. And I think our most recent one is a really good example of this. We were in the summer of 2022 and looking at our open burning restrictions and noticed that we didn't have really good enforcement on that. Now, if we did our regular process, that's that lasts between 30 and 60 days on a fast track. We wanted to pass it immediately. We were in a high fire, we were in a high fire concern time. We worked with North Metro Task Force and we got counsel to adopt that in an emergency manner. We did wait that eight days before it became in effect. If this charter question passes, if we did something similar to that in the future, it would go into effect that very day. So next slide. So that question says, with no change to the high standard specific reason and publication requirements required by charter to approve emergency ordinances, shall 6.8 be changed to allow emergency ordinances to go into immediately? The reason that I drafted the question with that first phrase is I don't want the public to think that this is not going to be done in a public meeting. There's not going to be public comment. There's not going to be publication. We're still going to have all that. It's just going to be on at a faster clip. Next slide. All right, the last ballot question is 2281. This would permit IGAs to be intergovernmental agreements, excuse me, to be approved by a majority vote rather than the current two thirds. This is another one that I'm not exactly sure why intergovernmental contracts require two thirds of a vote of council. Our other contracts do not. They require a majority vote, no matter the amount. So the the other request or the other proposed change tied to this question is that we would formalize the ability of council to delegate signature authority for IGAs. Council might recall that we do this for our Department of Public Health and for our Department of Human Services because they have so many intergovernmental agreements. I mean, it is it is delegated authority that we do by resolution from council. You get reports from human services on their operations. So we we think it would be good for future councils to know that there is that ability of council to delegate signature authority. I have a pine from my office that I believe that authority is there. I believe council can with a public vote, delegate that authority. I just think this might be good to formalize that you can. You don't need to and you can, and you can revoke that delegated authority at any time. The last part of this question would be a recommendation that IGAs be published on the Broomfield website when practical and feasible. I will say that the Charter Review Commission had recommended that the language be they are published on the website. In talking with staff, and as council might realize, sometimes when we promise to put everything on a website, it just does not go well. And we find out that we have we have old contracts or inconsistent contracts or different information on different sites. I want to impress on you the number of potential intergovernmental agreements that Broomfield could have that need to be posted on a website. We do a lot with our other, we just had one tonight. We do a lot with our other communities and to post that on a website with no context, somebody might think that we did vote on to build a taxiway. So after talking with staff, staff recommended, and I wrote this language, to be that, you know, when it's practical and feasible, we will make them available. These are public records. Anybody can get these IGAs. We definitely wouldn't change that. I just think a mandate that we post them on the website is probably problematic. Next slide. And that would be the ballot question for the charter change related to the intergovernmental agreements. I did, as I just want to reiterate that we will work on information packets in a blue book and also have contact information where people can submit questions so we can help our residents understand why we're doing charter amendments again, what this means and what the language. Try to make it as simple as possible for our residents to digest. That's all. I'm here for questions. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We'll now proceed with public comments. If anyone would like to be heard on this item, please make your way down to the podium. State your name and neighborhood for the record and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
It'll be very quick. Charles Lurrow over in Brandyline. For 2278, is there any consideration for temporary medical incapacity, things of that nature relative to the amount of absences?
That was an excellent question, and we're already talking about that, which will will come up in the discussion. There will be some clarification on that on that amendment. So listen in. Anyone else? All right, I'll go to my council colleagues next. Does any member of council, ah, councilmember Marsh Holschon?
On also on 2278. So I'm looking at the vac, the vacancy appointment for council and the mayor. They both say the individual selected shall serve until the next eligible coordinated election. So it might understand that every election that's held, every November election held in Broomfield is a coordinated election? Whether it's an even year or odd year?
Our charter defines or will with the change under the first ordinance will define coordinated election as our every other election. And then for the general election, we look to Title One, who uses the term coordinate election?
So that, so is that, and yeah, sorry, I didn't. Does that, so that, does that mean if if the vacancy happens in June of 2025, then the election is held in November 2025? And if the elections, if the vacancy is held, vacancy happens in June of 2026, it's going to be happen in 26?
No, no, because so, so if this question passes and the first question passes that updates the terminology that we use, if you look at the very end of our charter, coordinated election is defined just for charter purposes as the odd year elections.
Okay, so the way the charter will read is the even your elections won't count.
Correct.
Okay. That was my only question at the moment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we're talking about all of the ballot questions at once, so you can ask questions on all of them. Next is Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, and thank you, Nancy, for all of this. I listened to the the study session that I had missed. I was had listening to all the thoughtful input of council and wanted to just ask, I did have some issues, just sort of issues with IGAs and wondering with the super majority vote. I did do some research on this one where it felt like with with different IGAs that other governments do, like in Colorado Springs, where they have an IGA that's based on bonded debt. What are their example of IGAs where the financial scope might justify a higher threshold? Or have we done that in the past? Is that the reason why we had the super majority? Or we just don't know why we have it? And what would that do? I don't know.
There, our requirement for IGAs are is absolute. It's not tied to a value at all. I honestly don't know, but the absence of that value or any IGA for for equipment that's valued at X amount or for employment services at any amount needs to have, it's just any, any intergovernmental agreement. So, so I don't think it's tied to money. I think on your, you asked a question about bonded debt. It maybe, it reminded me that in our charter, we we have a requirement for two thirds votes on our general obligation bond ordinance. So I don't know if that would be tied together. I don't know if we would do an IGA related to bonded debt. We do our bonds by ordinance. I'd have to check what, I should have checked what Colorado Springs had on that part.
Yeah, I'm just interested in what what they do for that with an IGA and then you know, if other people use a super majority, here's my thought process on this. Like if we get into an IGA with another government, obviously, and and they vote, let's say, in a super majority and we don't, there might be some different powers at play there. Or if they have a requirement to have a super majority because of the amount and we don't, is that fair between the two entities? So I'm just trying to figure out, and this isn't an answer tonight. I'm not going to propose any amendments or anything, but maybe on second hearing or a second reading that we could look at that and just figure out should we need a two thirds majority? If we hit a certain amount and or if we are making an agreement with someone else who does require super majority as well? I'm also thinking about, you know, the Jefferson Parkway where we only had one vote out of three and we were always outvoted, you know, where the powers and that that contract or whatnot. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there. But I would like to do some research on just, you know, if we have some sort of financial agreement with others and if they have to vote in a certain way, should we be voting the same way too? As long as it's it's fair game between both of us.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Henkel. I I think we're already in that situation now where we enter into IGAs with entities that don't have the same super majority requirement or might have. Like I think about, well, the agreement we did tonight with Jefferson County, and they can approve that by their elected body by majority vote. Or even the Jefferson Parkway Highway Authority Agreement, our VADA, I'll double check their charter can approve that by majority vote. That wouldn't have changed our representation in that actual text of that agreement unless we went back and negotiated with them. So we're already in that situation where different entities have different requirements for their IGA. Some of them could delegate them to their city manager and have have their city manager sign it. I know that in Aurora, we had a similar similar requirement like this. It was even stricter. So we had to take task force MOUs to council and really, and those were with 10, 12 law enforcement agencies that all had different requirements for how they can enter into agreements.
Okay, okay. I'll just do more research on what this could look like and maybe a certain amount could trigger, you know, a super majority or something like that. So I'll do my research. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lim.
Yes, on the attendance requirement that could trigger a vacancy in that proposed ordinance, the what was the context in the conversation with the Charter Review Committee? So was it, did the Charter Review Committee see a past historical abuse? Did they see foresee something in the future? Were they just comparing the fact that other local governments had such an attendance requirement and we didn't? What was the context there that they came up with that?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. It was, it was not a reflection of a current concern. And it wasn't really looking at language from other entities. It was a concern in the future that somebody could just stop attending meetings and effectively you have a ward that only has one representative and there really is no recourse for the populace other than a recall vote in that four year term. And I think the concern was, well, what if that happened in the first year and that person just stayed on? But I do want to be clear, it was not a current concern or any specific example. I will tell you in a local government that I worked with, they did have this issue. And they didn't have any recourse. So there's the populace just waited until the next election.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, City Attorney Rogers. I think my only question is about the emergency portion of the ballot measure, which is transferring from changing language from eight days to effective immediately. I'm just curious on what, and of course, you know, in the memo and your presentation mentioned that it's only been used a couple of times. How, how important is those eight days going from, you know, me compared to being the immediate effect?
I think, I thank you for that question, Councilmember Winn. I think it depends on the health and safety reason that is triggering the need for the ordinance. You know, a lot of times it is a, an immediate need such as fire suppression and fire restrictions that those eight days could potentially matter where North Metro Fire wanted to work with code enforcement immediately to start addressing people's behavior in that summer and and a week could have made a difference. I mean, we'll really never know. The other, the other examples was, were during COVID, there was a temporary prohibition on rental late fees that was passed by council. That eight days, you know, might not have had a big effect overall, but it mattered to that one person who was getting issued that late fee during that day, during those eight days. So it it really depends on the situation that brought brought forth the need for the emergency ordinance.
Yeah, and my follow up question then, because I think this is a good example with, you know, emergency preparation. Obviously, we all remember the 2013 floods in Boulder and Lyons. So I guess would this emergency, you know, like, because we all know what's happening in Texas with the unfortunate floods that are happening there? Would this impact in a positive way or would this not really? Because obviously, if there is an emergency, we want our, you know, first responders to be active either way. So.
Give you a real life example.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Like, there's a couple with the pandemic, we had to make emergency expenditures, but if we didn't have an emergency ordinance in place, we wouldn't be reimbursed. Another example, the Marshall fires, we took in a lot of the evacuated folks, but again, we had to, you have to. In order to get reimbursed by the federal government, you have to have an emergency ordinance in place. This expedites that so we can spend the money and get reimbursed in a timely manner. That's the practical application.
I'm shocked it's taken this long to make a change that would, you know, would be detrimental and be massive effect if there is, you know, knock on wood, any emergencies. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Well, I do want to note that um, we as the city and county of Brumfield still have our authority to issue public health orders. And safety orders and emergency orders. That is separate from this ordinance, but they definitely work in partnership, right? So if we're seeing especially um uh, health and safety unlawful activity that our current code is not working. Like if we saw extreme looting, um, maybe we were able to address through public health orders, the emergency um orders. But we can't address that quickly enough and we need to change that because we need we need a stronger enforcement mechanism. They can work in partnership, but we do still have all of our public health and safety emergency order power.
Thank you, Attorney Rogers. Um, you know, just like like I previously mentioned, I finished my masters and one of the courses was emergency management. So this is important information. So thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick because I know Councilmember Ward has an amendment related to the vacancies that we'll discuss after this. But I had one quick question I wanted to ask, since the language in the ballot question just simply says vacancy, you know, fifty percent vacancy. Would that be incumbent if that passed, would we be incumbent upon us to then pass an ordinance to define how that's implement, what that means? What counts as a vacancy? Who determines what a vacancy is?
I think council could, and I would suggest since since this would be in code in or charter that you put that in code. Um, what a vacancy is. So you're trying to do the intent of the voters, which is if you miss a meeting. Um, we want to, we we want fifty percent of the time, we want you gone.
But we could define, we if this passed, we could then come back and define by ordinance. That the mayor define decides whose absence or whether it's excused or not, or whether a vacancy. And an unexcused or an excused vacancy both count as vacancies toward fifty percent, etc. Or to the point, if somebody's ill, we could excuse that and that wouldn't count toward the fifty percent.
I think if that was the intent of um. Counsel to do that, I think so that the voters are aware that that modification would be made. We probably want to add language that. As modified by ordinance to this question, um, because I I think as written, if I was a voter, I would think, okay, if you miss fifty percent or more. It's it's a lot of meetings, whatever the reason, you're out. Um, and to change it to an excused, unexcused health reason, whatever the reason might be.
Well, it's like if you go to school and you miss half the day. You're counted as present, even though you missed half the day usually. So if I miss half the meeting, am I vacant for?
I do think.
Is that a whole vacancy?
Right, I do think that that type of detail could be there, but I think when you're talking about having the body determine what's an excused and unexcused absence. Um, that that's a, to me, a pretty big change to the question. Um, because one person's excuse is another, I mean, it it might not matter to me as a voter. I want you at the meetings and you've got to figure out a way to get over your absence.
I know there's going to be different disagreements over the definition of the absence. So we would just need to add to your language as modified by, I think you said ordinance or code.
Um, yeah, so let's see, when an elected official misses fifty or more, uh, let's see. Got a vacancy, how would we word this? Can you put back up the two, two, seven, eight slide, James? Uh, next one. Let's see, so a vacancy. As defined more particularly in code, in elective or that a vacancy in elected office comma as defined by code. Will occur when an elected official, like something like that, so that the public knows there'll be more modification, more specificity provided by council in the future.
Do you anticipate in the blue book? That that could be explained as well, that these are potential modifications. Definitions of.
Yeah, the definition of absence.
I mean, to go back to the school example, if you attend once of eight periods of class, you're counted as present.
Mm hmm. Yeah, if you attend half the meeting, less than half a meeting.
Present.
Yeah.
Okay, I know this will come up later with Councilmember Ward, but thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Ward. All right, Laurie, you guys hand up.
Mayor, um, I just have one follow up question to what Councilmember Henkel had asked, um, related to the two thirds. Going down to potentially um fifty percent. Would we be able to just? If the measure were to pass, that we're allowed to do IGAs at fifty percent? Um, or just over fifty percent, I should say. That for specific instances where we feel a two thirds should be warranted, we could spell out in either code or council rules and procedures. That these instances are where a higher majority should. Uh, be used.
Uh, Councilmember Ward, I do think you could, and I would suggest that it be in code. Um, since you're modifying something that's in charter. Um, but pretty much you're saying that there could be an ordinance that, you know, we have a, we have a code requirement that addresses procurement. That says the city manager, for example, the city manager has authority to approve $200,000 or less by contract. That same code provision could be modified to to say, you know, it it's passed in a public meeting to readings by council. And if council ever has a contract or IGA over a million dollars or eight million dollars or 10 million dollars, that must be approved by a super majority.
Thank you. That was my only question.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, I have two questions. The first one is on the not being able to hold two offices. That doesn't preclude somebody from running for two offices at the same time. They would just one day, when the election was over, like before they were sworn into office in Brumfield, they would have to be. They would have to relinquish their seat. And then if they were sworn into other office, they would automatically lose their seat, or how does that work? But they could run for, you could be sitting on one seat and running for another one, right?
Yes, yes, you could run at the same time. I I'll I'll bring up Councilmember now Rep. Lindstat. Um, he was running for the state office. He did it as if we had this rule in place. He was running for state office, won that election, held on to his council seat until the day before he was sworn in. Um, so that the the way he did that would be consistent with the way this rule is written.
Okay, and then I think this question is going to come up later, but why why did we only do? Coordinated coordinated and not general elections for the um customer vacancies?
Um, because because those are the Brumfield elections, the every two year odd year election.
Okay, so there's nothing precluding us from, is there, there's nothing precluding us from doing general elections as well? Is there any?
No, there's not, and we'll I'll go ahead and talk about this. It'll probably come up during the amendment discussion. But uh, we had asked the clerk if there was any increased cost or staff time. If we were only a municipality, there would be, because our clerk wouldn't be working on those evening year Novembers. I mean, working, you know what I mean, working in election. Our clerk is because she has those requirements um as a county clerk. So there is no extra lift cost wise. I mean, the ballot might be a little bit longer. You know, there there's a question for voters that they normally wouldn't see on an evening year, but generally, it's not a big staff lift to to do this also at a general election.
Okay, and that would get the position filled sooner with a vote, so, okay.
The position would be filled. It would be when the uh, an elected person would take that office.
Right, okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Liam.
What are my questions? Uh, the blue book, I'm not clear, is that getting mailed to voters? Are we making it available in print, online, what?
It would be online only because of costs.
That's what I.
Um, and we would try to use our social media networks, our be in the loops to try to um communicate that it was available.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be possible to give some printed copies to the election judges at the polls? Because last time they got a lot of questions at the in person voter service polling centers and they didn't have a laptop to pull things up. And many people, you know, um. Don't have computer access too, so, you know, to give them something, an option to have a takeaway. We wouldn't have to mail them, but to have some hard copies on file um for on request.
We can do that, yeah. Yeah, and that's a good point about the election judges and finding some time to maybe maybe do a Q and A training just with those election judges.
Sure.
About the questions. That's a good idea.
Well, thank you. I just thought of it. Any other questions from my colleagues? All right, so next, uh, we're going to take them one at a time. Next is, let me get my sheet up so I know where we are. I don't have, I don't have them all committed to memory. Okay, first. Is council's consideration of proposed ordinance two, two, seven, six? That is the um update on the language revisions. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number two, two, seven, six, ballot question one A, general update and language revisions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number two, two, seven, six on first reading and order published in full? And that a second reading in public hearing could be scheduled for August 12th, 2025. Councilmember Henkel. I'll move. Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen, is your button working? Okay, all council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Thank you. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance two, two, seven, seven. And that is the charter update and um. Uh, that's the council qualifications one, so um, will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number two, two, seven, seven, ballot question one B, council council qualifications.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number two, two, seven, seven on first reading and ordered published in full? And that a second reading and public hearing be scheduled for August 12th, 2025. Councilmember Winn.
I make this motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Dalgadillo.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally. Councilmember Ward, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
My vote is yes.
Okay, all council members have entered their vote and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number two, two, seven, eight on mayor and council vacancies. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number two, two, seven, eight, ballot question one C, mayor and council vacancies.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number two, two, seven, eight on first reading and order published in full? And that a second reading and public hearing be scheduled for August 12th, 2025. Councilmember Henkel.
I'll move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn.
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Do you have your hand up, Councilmember Ward?
I do.
Councilmember Ward.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I have two uh, proposed amendments for this ordinance. Uh, the first one is going to be um, a motion to strike uh, from four point seven A, the language about. The fifty percent attendance requirements for the time being. Uh, the reason for this is while I think it is important that we have something kind of as a safeguard. For an elected official that doesn't attend. In having conversations with all of you uh, while being in Australia, which is so much fun. There wasn't necessarily a consensus that I could find about. What are the exact? Types of uh. Excused absences that shouldn't count towards this fifty percent requirement, uh, who determines? Et cetera, and I didn't want to try and put all of that in a ballot question because one, it just makes it too long. But two, I think it's not good governance to put such specificities in um, a governing document such as a charter, so. Pull it for now, come back and visit it later at another time when we can fine tune. What do those details look like and then bring it back to the voters?
All right, thank you. So the amendment, Councilmember Ward's amendment is on the screen. And the and you can see the results, the amended language. So is there a second? Councilmember Winn.
I second Councilmember Ward's motion.
Thank you. Um, is there any discussion? Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I understand where Councilmember Ward is going with this. Um, I do think that it's important to have the fifty percent in there. I remember in the Charter Review Committee discussions, there was a lot of discussion about excused versus not excused. If I remember correctly, a lot of the question discussion was, well, who gets to say what's excused? And can that be weaponized by a council in the future? And there's a lot of issues. So I think the the recommendation was just a straight fifty percent, because otherwise you go down a rabbit hole of what's excused, what's not. I I I'm kind of on the fence on which way I would go on that and whether we we should put an excuse in there or not. But um, I understand where he's going with this, so I probably will vote for his amendment. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I actually am going to vote against this amendment because I think this fifty percent is quite generous. Considering the fact that you could actually attend online. So whether you're a new parent, you're having some medical issue, if you have a medical issue or something of such a nature that you can't attend fifty percent of the meetings, even online. Then it's really, really tough to represent. I I get I get the part where I guess I wouldn't want somebody to show up for five minutes, say I'm present. And and then that would look ridiculous anyways, so I think if somebody's going to join the meeting, they're going to join because they're going to be present for a certain amount of it. So I don't see why we would strike this. Um, and it just we just lose that power to remove somebody who is not attending. And not representing, so I will uh, vote against this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I would not vote for it if it's just says a straight fifty percent, because I do think to Councilmember Marsh Holson's. Anybody can find a way to abuse this if it's not defined. I would be willing to support if we were willing to do as the city attorney indicated, add a line that said as determined by code. So that if if this passes, the connects council can establish rules. We we establish rules for attendance now, and we could just define what specifically fifty percent means and who administers that and whether there's an appeal, etc. Um, so if the council is willing to do that, I would support it. So I don't know if that would be an amendment. At which point? Can we introduce that language? After this is voted on or before? Can it be done before this?
What language?
So if I propose that we amend this, not to strike this, but to add the sentence that I can't repeat. That city attorney stated from the podium about. As modified by code, I think was the sentence.
Ms. Rogers.
So the amendment that's on the floor right now is to remove this whole sentence. This is a little different. Um, I think if this amendment fails, then maybe have that discussion of adding that secondary language. And just so that that's sort of my thought. They they seem very different to me.
Well, I guess my question is, can this just be a council rule in in code? Does it, does it have to be in the charter?
Um, the only way where a vacancy, where fifty percent absences result in you losing your office can only be in charter.
Okay.
You couldn't pass a law that that makes council able to kick somebody out of their office.
Okay, just checking.
But you can put, but to Councilmember Cohen's point, um, and Mary, I think you said this too, council can establish rules for attendance. Um, the remedy won't be losing your office. There would be other remedies, censure, fines, removal of committee assignments, stuff like that.
Gotcha. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Um, so we're going to continue on with this, but thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember. So we're going to continue on with this, but thank you, council member Cohen. Counsel member when?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why I think this is to be something that we should consider in this amendment is, you know, 50% is a bit. I see where council member Austin War is coming from. And I think one lesson I've learned is that, you know, we are very privileged to have the proxy of, of being online during council members. A lot of various bodies of government doesn't even allow that. In the United States Congress, you can't vote by proxy through virtual means. You have to be present in person. And so I think where I'm coming with this is maybe this is not like tinfoil or skepticism, but you know, there might be a chance where council demands that, or the quorum is that you have to be in person. And I can see where that big percent attendance requirement could be used against council members if they can only, you know, if they're outside the country, outside the state, but that, that's my slight concern. So, yeah. Y'all, rest of my time.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Shab.
Thank you, Mayor. So I like this amendment because I think there's two different issues going on within this ballot question. One of them is the vacancies of a council member and a mayor. And instead of doing what's currently in the charter, which is that the appointment would serve the remainder of the unexpired term, it would be taken care of a lot sooner or potentially a lot sooner in terms of filling that at the next coordinated election. So I do support that, that piece, the, the 50% attendance thing, I think muddies that conversation up. I think the voters will support the, the as amended, this ballot question. Thanks, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion? Counsel member Ward, sorry. I don't have the Zoom screen up.
No, I don't have any, any statements. I think one of the, well, I guess I'll say one thing. One of the reasons that I had originally proposed or that I'm bringing this proposal is my original amendment was going to be outlining explicit instances where an absence because of, let's say, the birth or the adoption of a new child or military service of the elected official should not necessarily count against them for attendance purposes. But as I stated before, I don't think outlining those because I'll, I don't think that's good governance, number one. But number two, in having conversations with all of you, there was not necessarily consensus about what else should go in. And I didn't want to make it such a long list. And I think it doesn't, this is a different conversation that needs to be had for a different time.
All right. Thank you. Counsel member Anderson.
Okay, I see where this is sort of going, where the, I, I get the muddying waters. I get the potentially changing of the online piece, but I also feel like we, we are, our hands are tied at this point in time if somebody is not attending. So I still feel like this is like a really, it's been in the works for a while. We've talked about it. Need to find a way forward. Is there still time to put a separate ballot question on? It doesn't muddy the one. Give us a little bit more time to think about it. Do we have time to bring forward a separate ballot question? Would that have to be for next year?
Ms. Rogers.
Can I get back to you? I'm, I'm just, we, we schedule conservatively and with that August 12th date, if we did a first reading on August 12th, no, we, we would have time. If council would like to separate this out into its own question. But I, I will say, so we have time, but I think we have the same challenges that we're having right now is and what council member Ward alluded to in his discussions with you all individually was it almost needs a study session to hash this out and what will, would be an excuse, not excuse to make a ballot question. Hit all the points you wanted to hit.
And this could potentially have a study session before next year and be prepared to bring it back and, and then somehow address the, the piece where if the online, I don't know when we would ever not be online anymore, but, but to somehow connect it to that, that, that requirement would only apply with the option for online or something. But yeah, that was the, I hadn't thought of that one. I still think it's, I still think people can make it here 50% of the time. So I will still be voting against it. But I, I see, I see the nuances. And yeah, if, if this doesn't end up in there tonight, I'd like to find a way to move this forward in the future. So, thank you.
And we could, council member Anderson, we do keep an ongoing list. I mean, there's still other recommendations that the charter review committee had. Well, there'll be future ballot questions related to the charter. And this one could be one of them.
I'm gonna go because I haven't really, and y'all did. So I agree with council member Anderson. 50% of meetings is a really high threshold. I mean, you're signing up to be responsive and, and be available and meet with people and serve. And how can you do that if you're checked out half the time? You shouldn't be doing it that. And you obviously don't want to do it. I don't think it comes down to if, if someone has like a four-year term, two years where they can't serve, well, then they should probably step down. But they may not. So then what that does, it puts the burden on the other ward rep to carry all of the engagement, all of the email responses, all of the meeting requests. And trust me, it's a lot. So I'm, I'm in full agreement with you, council member Anderson, on this. I think there needs to be some recourse. If someone just totally bails on their, their responsibility. Because they have a responsibility to the citizens, to our residents. And if, if you're not showing up and you're checked out, then you should be removed. That's my thought. Counsel member Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question and then one parliamentary question, but to respond to your statement, just to state that I do believe there's the law of unintended consequences. That for instance, the scenario of a council member has cancer. And that's the six months of chemotherapy. Maybe they rely on city council for health insurance. And if our rule arbitrarily just kicks them off, even though they could return in six months, having completed their infusion therapy, et cetera. That seems an unintended arbitrary consequence. We don't necessarily want to have happen. That's why I think we need to establish some pretty clear rules for that reason. And for the reason that, you know, we can sit here and imagine all sorts of ways this can be weaponized if the right circumstances come to play. So I have a question for the parliamentary question for the city attorney. So I don't want to vote for this ballot question with the undefined 50%. So I would vote for council member Ward's amendment. Am I allowed to then make an amendment to restore that language with the extra sentence as defined or as modified by code? You can get back to me.
Just think for a second.
Right. If you need time, I'll go to James.
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor.
You all are making a lot of good points. I've been going back and forth because I'm trying to, I'm remembering, I'm remembering the, the charter review committee. You know, 50% is a high bar. But even that can be weaponized because you, we, somebody could, we, if future council could take away the remote access rule. And then all of a sudden, somebody who has cancer or has a kid can't attend. That says 50% is, is a lot of meetings and you have to miss a lot of meetings to, and really shouldn't be on council if you're going to miss that many meetings. And the charter review committee did not like the idea of the exceptions because if I'm in favor, if, if I'm in the clique of the council members that like me and then you're going to prove my exceptions. If I'm not, you're not going to prove my exceptions. Then that, that can be weaponized very, very easily and badly. And I think that shows distrust among the public of allowing us to your favoritism kind of thing. So I honestly don't know where I'm going to vote on this. So I'd be interested to hear council member Cohen's.
I know. I keep going back and forth. Now, council member Cohen has convinced me that yes, there could be some unintended consequences. So thanks for the confusion. Council member Dalgadillo.
Thank you, Mayor. To me, my take, it sounds like the kind of conservative approach is to go with the amendment. Give this a little bit more thought, circle back to how we wanted to find it. Cause I think it is a little bit hard to double back for something versus to pass a little bit less than what we think is reasonable and come back later. So I think with that, I am going with council member Ward's amendment, not because like, I, I also think that if you miss 50% of the meetings, you should not be on council, period. And there should be recourse for that. You know, regardless of a lot of the reasons. So, but, but I still think let's have a more robust discussion. I think there's a lot more that needs to be said. So we'll go with the amendment, circle back later. That's my take. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counsel member Lim.
I agree with council member Shaft that if we're having this extensive discussion about this vacancy provision, it's going to muddy the waters too much for the voters. I mean, and if we are sincere about the, what we feel and what the charter committee felt should be changed and that's specified in parts B and C, then that, then we should have that standalone, that B and C standalone, recognizing that A is just going to cause too much confusion and cause people not to vote for the ballot initiative then. Right? When we want B and C to pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Did someone tell council member Henkel we're about to vote on the amendment?
Well, I, I have a filler, Mayor, as you're grabbing council member Henkel. I think that it would be a vote on the question. Council member Cohen, you would have to do a motion to reconsider first. Because it isn't essentially a vote on the same topic.
So some verbiage, I would just have to say, I have a motion to reconsider the previous vote. And that would have to be voted on?
Yes. And you have to be on the prevailing side. And then I would say that as a new amendment, it would have to meet the higher threshold in council rules for amendment that wasn't introduced.
Okay.
Fine. Okay. Counsel member Anderson, final thoughts?
Yeah. So council member Liam has now convinced me that for the purpose of letting it pass, I will, I, I, I will, it's fine, but I, I do want to make sure that we either we do that motion, we consider if that fails, we do that study session. That, that is, yeah, that is a strong request, but I, I, I get it now. So thank you.
Okay. But we'll give it a shot. Let's go ahead and vote on council member Ward's amendment. Counsel, please, once we get to that screen. Yeah. Voting on the amendment. Council members, go ahead and vote. Council member Ward, I'm assuming you support your amendment?
I do support my amendment.
Okay. And all council members have entered their vote. The results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. All right. All right. So now we're back to the ordinance as amended. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Saying no further, any other discussion? Yeah.
Since I put the city attorney on the spot, we should at least follow through. It may not. So this would be a motion to reconsider.
I've only done this once in my eight years, so bear with.
We should do it once.
Yeah, we've only done this once.
I want to be like Devon.
You are.
Before he leaves us. So.
Let's give this a try.
So I make a motion to reconsider the amendment vote, right?
Yes.
And he needs a second.
He needs a second.
Okay, we got a second. Counsel member Cohen has made a motion to reconsider. Counsel member Anderson has second. Any discussion? Counsel, Mayor Potem Shab.
Yeah, just wanted to, I just wanted to check. So a motion to reconsider, that needs a two-thirds majority vote to move forward with a reconsider, correct?
Eighty-four percent positive. That is two-thirds. Yeah.
The intent would be if this passes to make a motion to restore the language we just stripped, but add the sentence as modified by code. Just so you know what the intent is before you vote on the reconsideration.
That's not vague or anything.
Pretty clear.
But as modified by code is the.
It's the language that the city attorney has said would allow us, if this passes, to come back and pass basically by ordinance, what the rules are, what a vacancy is, who determines it, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't think it's.
No, it's Austin. Can you mute, babe?
Point of order, yes. Why not?
Here we go. Thank you, James.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
For having that handy.
That's how our rules can modify Robert's rules. So thank you.
Okay. So now we have to.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. You can take that down. Sorry, James.
I, I need help, really. I've only done, I, I wasn't the mayor when we did it either.
So now it's the vote on council member Cohen's motion to reconsider, and it was seconded. So if, if if, yeah, and it passes by a majority. And if this, it's like a second bite at the apple on the amendment. So you're, you're in essence, voting again on council member Ward's amendment.
Modified.
Not ma, not modified, not yet. I, I do still think council member, this is, so the reasoning council member Cohen gave for this is that if this motion to reconsider pass, passes, the language goes back into the question, he is going to present an amendment to add as defined more particularly by code.
Tonight?
I believe so.
Okay. Though the green writing, okay, I see. Okay. So let's, let's vote on it.
So this is, this is a revote in essence on council member Ward's amendment to remove in its entirety, the 50% language.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't.
The yes vote puts back what we just took out.
Yes.
We start over. Then you will vote, once I make a motion, assuming there's a second on adding to the yes vote now would add the red lettering back. The following motion would insert the green lettering wording. So at the end, if everybody voted yes, we would end up with the ballot question with all the red, green and black words.
So it is confusing. A yes vote. And so pretty much you all voted yes. Oh my goodness. Mayor, can I have a, just about 30 seconds?
If I can. Cause I'm not following. I'm not following how we just passed something unanimously. And if people vote again unanimously, how is that even, what was the purpose of a reconsideration if we vote the same?
It doesn't matter how you voted before. It's just a vote on a motion. And the effect of the emotion is to put the red wording back in the ballot question. That will be followed up by an emotion to add the green wording. And if that passes, then we've approved, I believe, the ballot question with the black, the red and the green wording. All there, 100%. If you vote no, we have stripped out the 50% requirement.
Well, that's what council.
And that'll go, and that'll, and the green's not even there yet. And we'll go forward without any 50% requirement.
Too late for this. It really is.
If you vote yes, you're, you're starting over. So we're back to where we were before council member Ward's amendment. Then we have a second vote per my proposal, assuming there's a second that we amend the original proposal to add the words in green as defined by, particularly by code. If I, if I, unless I messed up somewhere.
Because I, I don't want to add complication to this. I think there might have to be two votes. If, if I could just have a second. So I want to be able to cite Robert's rules on this. Cause council member Marsh Holson is correct about what our.
Okay, I'm going to call a recess.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we're going to have like, I don't know, I want 10 minutes. So at 9:50, we'll resume at 10 o'clock. Thanks. Welcome back to part three. We were continuing our conversation about charter ballot amendments. I'd like to turn it over to our city and county attorney, Nancy Rogers, for some further clarification.
Thank you. So we have a motion for reconsideration on the floor. Now, that's a vote on whether or not council should vote again on the Ward amendment. What you're voting on is, should we take another stab at it? If that passes, then council will do a second vote on the Ward amendment. If it fails, the amendment vote stands, the 50% language is removed. So that's the first vote. Then, um, if the motion for reconsideration passes, which is your vote to say, yes, I want another vote on the Ward amendment, then council needs to vote on the Ward amendment again.
Okay.
If it passes, then we're done. If it fails, then the 50% language stays in, and then Councilmember Cohen can introduce his amendment to add in language as defined more particularly by code. So the first step would be calling the question on that motion for reconsideration.
All right. I got it. I think I got it. So first, uh, we are, council, we have a motion and a second, right? Cohen and Anderson, and we're going to vote on Councilmember Cohen's motion for consideration. Council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally. Councilmember Ward, we're back.
I voted no.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Ward votes no. All councilmembers have entered their vote. And that fails three to six. So we're going back to, uh, the original ordinance as amended by Councilmember Ward.
Yes, the discussion on the Ward amendment is complete. The 50% language will be removed from the ballot question.
All right, so seeing no further discussion, we'll move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2278 as amended. No?
I have one more. Yeah, I have my one more amendment.
We have to vote on this first, babe.
Uh, no, no.
No, this is for the same ordinance.
We're back to the main ordinance as amended.
Yeah.
Um, so we're going back to the discussion of the overall question, um, which includes the question about general coordinated election.
And that's my second amendment.
So we're, we're done with the 50% vacancy discussion entirely, but we're still discussing ordinance, 2278 overall, and talking about, um, what will be a second amendment.
Still discussing it, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my second and final amendment is in section, um, B and C, that we add instead of only coordinated elections, it'll be general or coordinated election to fill, to elect the successor after a vacancy.
Okay. And is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Second.
Cool. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cohen.
I'll be quick. Um, I would not support this for this pure reason is that if we put this on a general election ballot, correct me if I'm wrong to the city clerk, but the city ballot measure would be at the bottom of the ballot for the most part. That anything statewide, state senator, state representative, congress would all be at the top. And there is a phenomenon, and I'm forgetting the exact term, of ballot fall off. Fewer people vote at the bottom of the ballot than they do at the top of the ballot. So my point is, if you put this on a general election, the city item will be at the bottom of the ballot, and will get fewer voter, less voter attention than if it's in a coordinated election, which is city-county only. If that makes sense. I'm not making a lot of sense tonight, apparently, but my objection.
That does make sense.
Oh, good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. I absolutely support this. I think the fact, anytime we have a vacancy appointment, uh, by council, it behooves the electorate to have, that, let them have a vote to fill the seat as quickly as possible. Um, and so putting it on, if, if someone was resigning in January of, I don't know, 2026, if we, the current language wouldn't put that, that appointment election until two years later, almost. This would, his amendment would allow it to happen in 11 months. The faster we get a vote is the better. And we're doing away, we're, we're proposing to do away with the, um, special election for mayor. I think for the voters to approve that, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna need to see that we're, they're filling the election faster, so I support this. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just like Councilmember Marsh Holson said, I think it is up, the voters have the right to elect, to elect who should represent them, and I think they should do it at the most available time. And to Councilmember Cohen's point, we already have lower turnout during coordinated elections on odd years, as it is. So I think the fact that voters should have the overall say on who represents them should outweigh the fact that there's gonna be probably lower voter turnout on a, on a general year election.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this amendment? All right, seeing none, but you should encourage the General Assembly to follow our lead. Right, councilmembers, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes eight to one. What else you got, Councilmember Ward?
Oh, that's it. I just said, just that one. Yep, we're good.
All right, so we're done with 2278. We're gonna go back to.
Now we vote on the overall.
Good. Seeing no further discussion, we will move forward to the vote on ordinance number 2278 as amended. Councilmembers, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally. Yep, did I yes?
My vote is yes.
Okay, thank you. And then all councilmembers have voted. The results will be displayed, and that passes unanimously, nine to zero. Well done, y'all. Thanks for that, that fun. Next is council's consideration. Is it 2279? Yes. Um, and that is the Code of Ethics. Okay, with, um, we discussed all this, right? Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2279, ballot question 1D, Code of Ethics.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2279 on first reading and order published in full, and that a second reading and public hearing be scheduled for August 12th, 2025? Councilmember Anderson. Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Marsh Holson?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please cast your vote verbally.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed. That passes eight to one. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2280. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2280, ballot question 1E, emergency ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2280 on first reading and ordered published in full, and that a second reading and public hearing be scheduled for August 12th, 2025? Councilmember Lim?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Winn?
I second the.
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Lim?
Yes, I just, I was the one who suggested that this go move forward. I think there's, could be circumstances where we need to enact the, this legis, these ordinances quickly in a, in emergencies, and I think it would be good if we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All right then. Um, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. All councilmembers have voted, and the results will be displayed on the screen. That passes unanimously nine to zero. Next is council's consideration of proposed ordinance number 2281, and that is the intergovernmental agreements. Will the clerk please read the proposed ordinance by title?
Ordinance number 2281, ballot question 1F, intergovernmental agreements.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2281 on first reading and order published in full and that a second reading and public hearing will be scheduled for August 12th, 2025? Councilmember Anderson.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember W. D. O.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, council, please cast your vote electronically. Councilmember Ward, please state your vote verbally.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. All councilmembers have entered their vote, and the results will be displayed on the screen, and that passes eight to one. As a reminder, these ballot question ordinances will return to council for second reading on August 12th, 2025. And if approved, they will be on the ballot in November 2025, and the voters have the ultimate approval. Thank you all so much for that conversation. And Ms. Rogers, thank you for all of your work on this. Councilmember Lim?
If, if someone bring, it, does this fall under the rules of a third reading? If someone brings an amendment on second reading, does this require a third reading then?
It, it would unless council suspended that rule. That's in your council rules.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item of business for council's consideration this evening is councilmember Cohen's request for future action regarding an amendment to the Brimfield sign code to adopt language to allow temporary signage from Friday to Monday in the right of way. This is not a discussion on the topic, but instead an opportunity for council to provide staff direction on whether or not council desires staff to dedicate time and resources to this request. Councilmember Cohen, um, you may now begin your five-minute presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. It won't take five minutes. Just, so the genesis of this is some constituent complaints and concerns that we have a very efficient compliance code officers who do a rigged job of removing signs in the right of way. And you may have seen them varying from pizza places to a, a lot of ones this past weekend where there's some sort of $97 AC uh, offer that was, there's probably 20 plus signs throughout. But this was different. They were concerned that they are having difficulty advertising their yard sales or open houses. And they brought up that city of Thornton has a sign permit with us that allows uh, transient signs, as they're called, in the rights of way from 5:00 AM on Friday to 7:00 AM the following Monday. In other words, a weekend, a waiver, so to speak, that would allow people to put up yard signs and open houses sign without concern of those signs being confiscated. As the city attorney notes, we can't govern, can't rule that only certain signs can be allowed during that period. It would have to apply to any sign. So there is the downside that could allow commercial signs over that weekend period to be left unconfiscated. But, um, so anyway, the concern from some residents attached, contacted me is that we could be a little more lenient on the weekends when these people are trying to promote their private sales or their, or their open houses and et cetera. So that's the proposal to ask whether you want to consider that, uh, adopting something either as Thornton has or something related or similar to that that would prevent or allow people to advertise their private sales.
All right. Thank you very much. Thumbs up? I do have a question from Ms. Rogers. Do you, did you reach out to Thornton government to find out how that's going?
We did. Code enforcement did, and my office did. Um, as councilmember Cohen mentioned, council can't regulate the sign, so it's any temporary signs are allowed. They, the things they struggle with, let me pull open my signs. It doesn't stay to the right of way. People attach them to lightbulb and boxes. It's, it takes a lot of staff time on Monday and Tuesday to clean up the signs that the people don't clean up. The other, uh, they have to dispose them. Um, the city takes the responsibility for disposing the sign with that cost. It's harder in political seasons. Campaign signs or other signs are allowed as temporary signs, just like garage sale or food truck signs. Education has been tough. They have about 100 to 200 signs on any given weekend.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, so I, I just have a couple of questions like the, okay, so, and that was super helpful because I, I'm so conflicted on this because it's, you really want people, people to be able to put that temporary garage sale sign. But then I started thinking about the scenario, if we had somebody who got in the habit of putting their political campaign signs up, the city would come get them. And then the, the, in the past, you've been able to go down to the city and get those signs. Could you get, could those be just like not returned? Because you could have the same person put them up on Friday, the city takes them down, and they come get them on Monday, they put them up again on Friday, and a cycle. Would, would that lead, would that become a habitual cycle potentially? Or could, or would, or can the city, it's like, you know, the second or third time, just dispose of them and say you're not getting them back?
Um, I, I think the city could dispose the signs that were on the right of way during times that they're not. I mean, it's sort of the situation we have now where, uh, for customer service, code tries to work with people and get their signs back to them when they can. It would be the same if this ordinance was in effect, except we'd have a lot more signs.
So if it became too much, it could just be like, the policy could be that we just dispose of them and we don't keep returning them to be put back out again. We could do that if we wanted to, if it became a problem.
Correct.
And then is this, this, the actual, so the code enforcement is more of the time-consuming part and not so much the code. The code, the staff time to put the code in place would be minimal, I'm assuming.
Yeah, the, the staff time to write the code, to write the ordinance is minimal. The, the big lift is going to be in enforcement and compliance.
I'm like a half thumbs up because, but yeah, I think there's enough support. But okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
I was just gonna say from the, um, from the perspective of, uh, holding, um, political signs, it would have, the, it would really be the, the code enforcement and then public works holding those signs. Who would determine that it was a political sign versus a candidate sign? We don't want to be in making that discernment, uh, nor do we want to be having to administer how many times have we held the signs and you have come pick them up? So, um, I think from a staff perspective, if your signs are in the right of way, um, past that deadline, we're throwing them away.
That'll, that'll set off a whole nother round of complaints because I got those complaints. We spent a lot of money on our signs. Like, well, the, you want us to enforce the law when you want code enforcement to, to, you know, follow the code, but then when it applies to you, it, it's really tough. So I don't, I don't know. But if y'all want to move forward.
I'll just speak to it just a little bit. You know, we're just asking staff to look into it. We're not passing anything tonight.
Okay, so you're not requesting the ordinance come back. You want to have a study session?
I think that'd be helpful. I mean, granted, I don't know all the issues and everything that city code, I just know this has been a concern. Um, I don't know if there's rules that we could stipulate. We don't have to pass what the Thornton has. If there's issues, maybe it can be adopted that, yeah, you just don't get your sign back, and that's simpler. Um, or, you know, but I do think it, because there's been some concern, people expressing they can't do their yard sign. And this one realtor said, I, you know, I can put my signs out in Thornton, they're not molested, but I put them in Brimfield and they disappear. And I don't want to get in the way of people trying to sell their house.
No, I know. I got, I got those calls due.
We may, this may end up being a conundrum we can't solve, or we find a solution that fits the situation. I don't know.
Well, let me ask.
It's not urgent, so I think it's.
Can we look into other ways to word it so that the it doesn't create the burden? I, I don't know.
We were hoping that it would just say yard sales.
Oh, just yard sales.
Nancy said no.
You can't, you can't, but I said no. We, she was hoping to do that.
That's because of the content neutral.
Content.
Yeah.
So if we're allowing yard sale signs, we've also got to allow, you know, vote. And, and it, go, you know, extreme signs that are arguably language that you might not want to see on a sign. When we get into the political signs, we cannot judge a sign based on the content. So it's temporary signs. We can do time, place, and manner. You know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they must be this size. They can't be attached to our stuff, those type of restrictions.
But the content has to be allowed, whatever it is.
Yep.
So it's not a lift to bring, to bring that back. It's, it's not a staff lift in order to.
It's enforcement.
Yes, and I mean, again, it all, enforcement, it, it depends on the number of elements that council wants to attach to the enforcement. I mean, obviously, staffs would be, if it's passed, you know, the six o'clock on Sunday, it's, we're throwing it out. The, again, it, it's hard to think that Thornton would be an example for the number of signs, like they're, they're getting 200 signs, um, in a weekend. I mean, that's huge. That's, that's, I just, I can't envision that happening here.
They're about double the population of Brimfield.
So, I mean, again, really, it's, it's, it's any caveats that are then placed on retaining and maintaining and administering any kind of pickup. But bringing a code, um, that, that wouldn't be a lift.
I think there's a challenge on the front end with no enforcement on the weekends. The calls that we get from residents that say, hey, you've got signs all up and down Lowell. Can you get somebody out here and pick them up? And the response would be, no, actually, they're okay for the weekend. We'll, we'll come get them on Monday. Thanks for the heads up. So there might also be com, complaints with, um, sign, I can't think of the word. Councilmember Cohen, you used the word, um, sign blight. Yes.
It'll look trashy.
There is that potential.
Now, let's go and see what our colleagues have to say. Councilmember Henkel. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Schaaf.
Uh, thank you. So my suggestion would be to not make the situation worse by moving forward with an ordinance that gives a carve-out for Friday to Sunday. Uh, just this past Friday, we had about 10 HVAC yard signs put in the right of way, uh, just scattered. Uh, some of those are still up. They have not all been removed. So, uh, by giving a carve-out to allow that to happen now, uh, means that it's going to be more frequent. And it already happens quite a bit in the southern part of Ward Three. So I would suggest that happens. But I, there is already a way to solve this, uh, which is to put those garage sale signs on private property with the consent of the property owner. Just today, I saw, uh, two real estate signs, uh, that called for an open house. Those were placed on private property um, and with the consent of that homeowner. So there's already a solution to this. Let's not muddy, uh, this up and create more of a problem. Thanks.
Well, just because I want to rule it out, um, could we do a sign permit thing? People could apply for a temporary sign permit.
We, we could. Um, and, um, we discussed this option of anyone can apply for a right-of-way permit. And we've seen these type of permits before from our developers. But, um, like the example of an HOA that does not own any entry property.
Like country states, for example.
They could apply for a right-of-way permit, um, say we're, here's a structure or even sort of not a memorial sign, but something like that that we're gonna put up. Can we use it? And we'll put our notices in there. There, the right-of-way permit is an option for individuals.
Or we would have to create it?
It exists.
Oh. So there's already a, a way for people to get permission?
We would, I, well, here's the concern with that.
Okay.
Um, we would not give a right-of-way permit for somebody to just put garage sale signs, temporary signs. Um, right-of-way permits are usually for more permanent structures. So an HOA looking to do that, we would ask them to create a structure for this sign. Like, like something where they can post their signs, not like, give me a right-of-way permit for me to put up my garage sale sign. And here's why we advise against going that route, because the next right-of-way permit you're gonna get is let me put my HVAC signs in the right of way. Why'd you give it to the HOA and not me? You're judging the content of the sign, so it all goes back to content. Um, so that's why the right-of-way permit might not be the option for somebody, an HOA that doesn't have the resources to build a structure to hold signs. But that, that, that is our suggested route, route.
Route. Thoughts? Colleagues? I want to do public comment. Come on up. Why not? I, I, I should have allowed public comment anyway, so it's on me and I apologize. What do you think?
Again, Charles LaBrue, uh, for anyone pursuant to, uh, council. One of the considerations I would have is you have to concern yourself again with content. Imagine you've now allowed Delby and Aryan Nations meeting at XYZ. You have no ability to forbid that. Likewise, for other constituents that you may not want to have, that may be, um, hmm, what you can imagine.
All right. Thank you. Come on up. Yeah, no, it's, it's public comment. Sorry, it's late.
Uh, Kim Tuisi, Nippon Side, The Outlook. As much as I love my political signs and happily put them on my property, I take my neighbors' feelings into account and I remove them when it's appropriate. And I feel like signs that get into the public way, they just get left there. You know, people are not good about removing the signs. And so it, much as I, you know, appreciate yard sale signs, I, I feel like allow purposely allowing them, we're just gonna have incredible sign blight. And sometimes they get in the way of being able to see around corners. And yeah, it's probably, probably not a good idea to open up that can of worms. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jen Rafe, Ward four. I lived in Thornton for a long time. And being very politically active, I can assure you that campaign signs will be in the hundreds and they won't be removed. And I agree with Mayor Pro Ten not to muddy the waters. If complaints are being had about real estate signs, anyone can stick a for-sale sign on their property. And we have social media now, and it's very easy to market and target market for free on social media. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, please take part in this discussion with us.
Sandy Anderson, The Broadlands, just to officially verbally say.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is two more people. Three. No, okay. Um, all right. Any other discussion? We'll do it. Thumbs up, thumbs down, I guess, uh, on whether to move this forward. Uh, okay, well, that looks like one, two, three, four, five, six against. I don't know if you're still there, councilmember Ward. But that's okay. You deserve to go to bed. Um, all right. So unfortunately, thank you, councilmember Cohen, for bringing that forward because I too received a lot of requests about garage sale signs. because I, too, received a lot of requests about garage sale signs. But once you dig into the details, it's not as simple, and we, we exhausted that conversation. So, I do appreciate it, and we'll just try to work on a case-by-case basis. So, is there any other business to come before the council from my colleagues or staff? No, right. There be no further business. The council meeting is adjourned. Good night.